Welcome, everybody, to the 183rd meeting of the Internet Society Board of Trustees in lovely Dublin. As we start the meeting, may I ask anybody if there is anybody who needs to declare any conflicts for the items on today's agenda? Seeing none, I think we're ready to move on. And the first item of business is always a happy one, which is the welcome to new and rejuvenated chapters and SIGs. The resolution for that reads Resolution 2024. Welcome and congratulations to new and rejuvenated chapters. Resolved that the Internet Society Board of Trustees extends a warm welcome and congratulations to new chapters, the Internet Society Los Angeles and Southern California, and the Malawi chapter. Further resolved that the Internet Society Board of Trustees celebrates the rejuvenation of the Indonesia Jakarta chapter and the Botswana chapter. May I ask the trustees to approve that by acclamation? We're very, very happy to be able to have this resolution. The next item of business is the Community Chair Reports, the first of which is by Cheryl Langdon Orr. Okay, the next of which is Harold and Mel Kier would normally have presented. Unfortunately, Mel Kier was not able to at the last moment. There is a key learning in their written, though, and I've asked Lauren to present that. If you look at the OMAC activities, they went through the roundtables, which were delivered, which were a look at the encryption landscape and the legislative outlooks associated with that. The WTSA Key Issues Roundtable, and then most recently, the highlighting local peering potential. All of those are very valuable activities, and we're happy to see that they were able to conduct those successfully. For the board, though, they asked to highlight in particular some key learnings, which are on the third page of their report, if you can scroll to that, please. So the first of these is a note that for many of the OMAC members, their organizations are not themselves typically focused on legislation. And they would therefore find it helpful when Internet Society staff provide support by guiding the members in navigating the landscape of legislation around particular issues and advising members on which legislation to focus on, because obviously, there's a heck of a lot going on. And I think this is actually something where the activation principles that are already in place for chapter activation could be applied to OMAC. So I think that there's an opportunity here for us to take the learnings that we have on the chapter side and apply them to OMAC, so that the same kinds of activation conversations can occur here. And obviously, these roundtables, especially the WTSA and the Encryption Roundtable, were ways for organizing that that are slightly different, but we can maybe have a little bit of synergy between the two groups and take up some of the same mechanisms and bring them to the OMAC. The other thing that they wanted to highlight is that the promotion of the Pulse Tracker, IXP Tracker, and the Poppin Content Locality Tracker would be very useful inside their community. Obviously, Pulse is a major effort of ISOC as a whole, and the value of Pulse is being seen in advocacy and in fundraising and in other places. But OMAC in particular wanted to call out to us these two pieces of it, because they benefit the organizational members' own connectivity efforts and strategies. And in many ways, it helps them understand why they might want to come and participate in a local IXP as opposed to requiring that locality to use transit to reach their services. I think this is something that many in the commercial IXP side kind of use the sales process to do, to be frank. But since there is no sales process for these community IXP's, having ISOC step up into that role, at least in reference to the organizational members, is something that the OMAC wanted to call out. Is there any other discussion of the OMAC report before we move on? Victor?
The... With respect to the local peering potential, are the notes from those meetings made available? This is like a summary. That's typically for digest outside of that particular roundtable group. The reason why I ask is, and again, this could be just a perspective. A lot of what I've seen typically deals with, when I see a lot of work around peering and discussions, a lot often around runtime, but not under fault conditions. And so I was wondering if that is being discussed. I'm just wondering if those kinds of things are being discussed, i.e. resilience inside of, you know, peering fabrics. Fault conditions often are a large factor in how well things perform. You know, you get where I'm going.
Yeah, so I don't think that this particular roundtable focused on that, but I know it's actually one of the things that the staff have been working with other groups on. In fact, the local IXP, that's a community IXP that's being developed in Lisbon, is talking to the ISOC staff about some mechanisms that they've developed to improve the resilience of the fabric, especially under DDoS conditions. So there is a good bit of work that's being taken from the learnings of individual IXP's and then shared back out. The basic mechanisms there aren't specifically focused on any organization's specific either threat models or business continuity requirements, but the overall learnings are definitely there. And one of the most interesting things about this is, I think, we have organizational members that use very different gear than maybe are typically used by ISOC and community IXP's. And so they're able to kind of take that in and say, okay, I see you doing this in this way on, let's say, Cisco or Juniper gear. I have an Arista thing. Here's how I would do it on Arista, and then making it more available inside that community. So it's definitely something where there is a kind of a staff-mediated mechanism for sharing information from different community IXP's and into the broader community.
And... And to answer the question you started with, there are summaries of the roundtable discussions that are posted. They're sent on the OMAC mailing list, and they're archived on the website. So you can go look at all of them. And while I'm here, I'll just say I generally attend the roundtables, and they're pretty good. And I'm very happy that this set of OMAC leadership started them.
Indeed, very, very much appreciated. I believe OMAC is also going through a leadership refreshment, I guess, would be the way I would put it at the moment. And it's definitely feedback that I hope we can carry back to the incoming leadership, that this was valuable not just to the OMAC, but to the broader community and to the board. Any other discussion on this point? Okay, hearing none, the next Community Chair Report would typically be from Glenn Dean, but I believe he's not yet online. Ah, well, let's go back to Cheryl. We are running a little bit ahead, so Glenn may be able to join us after Cheryl's report. Welcome, Cheryl.
Apologies, I had to rejoin as a panelist. And apparently, I'm not allowed to have video, so you can just look at a still shot of me. But I did put my lipstick on, if that helps. Cheryl Langdon Orr here, representing the Chapter Advisory Council and giving you our fourth quarter update. It's going to be, thank you so much for that, Lauren, or whoever's running the show. It's going to be a slightly truncated presentation inasmuch as what we have provided you with is, again, as usual, a quite brief update covering what we have done since our last quarterly update for you. Feel free to scroll down. I'm assuming everyone will be reading this later, but obviously, it lists the meetings, live links to the issues raised at the meetings. But I would like to focus on one of the outcomes from our third quarterly meeting of the Chapter Advisory Council, where thanks to some, I think, quite productive conversation with your Chairman of the Board and our very excitable, at times, members of the CHAC. We did agree that we needed to know a whole lot more about the communication strategy and the plans that will be coming into play under the new MD for the ISOC Foundation. And so if you'll scroll now to the section relating to our introduction to Chris Locke, which occurred on the 28th of October. And I've done a little review of what was said and what was achieved on all of this. But I do want to particularly call out for the... Ah, there we are. You have me now. I do want to call out for the Board of Trustees' attention how very much the Chapters Advisory Council rank and file, and particularly those that joined in the single-purpose call that is described in this report for your later reading. But also, particularly the Steering Committee. We truly appreciate the effort that Chris went to. His openness, his excellent ability to talk us down off the wall on some situations, and to leave us wanting and willing to have future interactions with him, so the potentials for misunderstanding in the future are minimized. And I think that's a very good thing indeed, but it is absolutely because of the quality of the staff that you employed. So congratulations to Sally and whomever was in that hunt for the right person, because so far, it appears you've certainly got the right person for the job. So that's a positive thing stepping forward. We like positive things. On not quite a negative thing, if you can scroll down to the review of the Chapter Advisory Council Charter and Rules and Procedures. Those of you who have gone, thank you, that's fine. Those of you who have weathered the storm of our advice and the toings and froings that happened with the formal advice from the Chapters Advisory Council on both the live streaming and the opening of the Chapter Delegates List, will know that there were under stress testing, and I think that's the best way of describing it at this point in time, stress testing, a couple of oopses, abilities for things to be misinterpreted, conflicting messaging, a number of little tidy-ups that need to be applied to our Chapter Advisory Council Charter, our rules, and our procedures. Just wanted to inform the Board of Trustees that this is about to become underway. We are a little behind on what we had hoped. We'd hope to be more progressed than we are now. But that being said, under the guidance of our current Secretary in the Leadership Team, Greg Shatten from the New York chapter, who is more than qualified to work with a group of volunteers on something like a review of our charter and rules of procedure. We have specifically invited a couple of individual chapter representatives, that being representatives from the UK chapter and from the Puerto Rican chapter, to definitely be involved in the review process. And a call for expressions of interest, not just to the CHAC representatives, but to the wider ISOC chapter community will be going out in the near future to see if there are others who have specific experience and skill sets in this type of review, if they would care to join us. So it's not a come-one, come-all. We will be perfectly open and transparent. But this isn't just a join-up for the sake of getting a name on a join-up list. This is going to be a short and intensive experience, and we really need people who have experience in drafting and the testing of all sorts of rules and standard operational procedures. So we expect a number who would have legal expertise and a number of other sort of allied skill sets to dig into that. Now, what I wanted to point out is what we hope will also come out of this update of our CHAC Charter and Rules and Procedures is a clarity and ease of understanding on expectations. So should the Board of Trustees, in looking at the new rules and charter and procedures, see opportunity where they might be able to identify a, if this happens, then this is expected, I hope, and the Steering Committee hopes, that that will assist us avoiding the concerns and miscommunications that occurred over recent times between us. So that's the boring bit, the bit that's appended to this, which is something many of you who were in the Board of Trustees at our last annual reporting to you. I made a note there that additional material is included in this PDF for your current information. But this is the part of the document which is still being drafted. And so therefore, we'll have additional material added to it and should definitely be treated as a work in progress. But what's appended here and what will be updated once it is agreed, completed, reviewed, and reported to the CHAC at the fourth quarter meeting, because part of our fourth quarter meeting is our annual general meeting. So this is going to be a report to our CHAC members. If you can scroll down or up or whichever direction is appropriate, keep going, keep going, keep going. You'll note here that, thank you, that's fine, that we have some statistics for this year based on our continued analysis of what chapters are engaged with the CHAC, what chapters have or do not have representatives, what chapters' representatives are regular attendees to what meetings in what time zones. Continue to scroll down, because I'm sure this will be much more exciting over coffee later. And you'll be able to see, thank you, that's fine. You'll be able to see the current percentages and time zones by quarterly meeting. And on the right-hand column, what we reported to you for the first time last year. So what we are hoping here is that this data acquisition and analysis will continue with the 2025 Chapter Advisory Council Steering Committee, and that we will build up some patterning that may assist us in targeted outreach and engagement. If you could scroll down to the pretty pieces on the next page, thank you so very much. Oh, yes, we've gone into the gory details of exactly who attended when and who's a regular attendee and who never misses anything. Keep going, thanks so much. And we'll get to, oh, yes, lots of statistics that you can go into and compare to last year's. I did want to take you to the charts, because those charts are often easier to look at. You will see that we really don't have a terribly large shift. They are... The chapters that are attending all of the plenary calls seem to be predominantly the same ones. They're not even all the ones that have membership of the Steering Committee. So perhaps, you know, further years and further analysis will help us unpick that. But at the moment, you can see the comparison in blue for 2023, linked to each of the regularly attended chapters. And of course, the 2024 statistics are there as well. Please scroll to the next pretty piece. And here is something that you did look at last year, which is the chapter reps that come up in terms of a percentage of the chapter reps possible. And you will see that, on average, we still have a similar number of chapters which have simply not appointed reps to the Chapter Advisory Council. That hasn't really shifted between 2023 and 2024's meetings. It's a little upping and downing. I suppose it's slightly better in terms of some numbers, but it is still a shortfall that needs to be addressed. And there's some words on the next page, if you don't mind scrolling down to that, where it notes that one of, thank you, that's perfect. One of the action items, as a result of this analysis, is that each of the Chapter Advisory Council Steering Committee members, specifically but not limited to those who are geographically appointed, have been given a list of those chapters in their region which have not appointed reps. And they have been asked to make a personal outreach and see if we can up the numbers that way. I will point out, and so you can read in the statistics later at your leisure, that there is a little bit of a blip at the end of each calendar year, and we believe that that increase in appointments of CHAC reps has a lot to do with the annual review process that chapters are involved in. We then go down, and I'm not going to take you through this. I just want to mention that it'll be forming part of our report to our CHAC representatives, all the gory details on the general check activities and the quarterly meetings. If you note, there will be some repetition, because these couple of pages that are here for your reading and information are going to be a standalone document for our AGM reporting. So paraphrasing what you've been told regarding Chris Locke, et cetera, you'll see repeated. So we're not crazy. They're going to be two separate documents. Please scroll down towards the end of the document. You'll be relieved to hear. Keep going, keep going, keep going. We have reviewed, mentioned the review again. But I particularly wanted to note the miscellaneous and annual activities of the Chapter Advisory Council, where we are remembering to remind our CHAC members what we do do more than just take complaints in areas of interest and do stuff with them. We also have a role in things like proposing the volunteer members to serve on the nominations and election committee, and so that's reported as well. That's pretty much the end of the drafting so far. This won't be ready until the 19th of November. And shortly after the 19th of November, we will send you an updated second part to this update. So you have a full reporting for 2024. Happy to take questions, but I know you're under a time crunch. Back to you.
Well, thank you very much, Cheryl, for the report. And especially thank you for the kind words, for the interaction with Chris. It's great to have him on board, and we're very happy to see that new lines of communication are coming with the new structures coming into play. That's very, very useful. Thank you as well for arranging that and for making sure that on the check side, that the openness to that communication is there and that it will continue. So that's very, very nice progress. I see Caleb had a question for you, Caleb?
I'm not hearing.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, not necessarily a question for Cheryl, but I'm just concerned about the participation and attendance. Perhaps Cheryl can answer that, but maybe I would just, maybe it's just a suggestion to like the CEO. Now, I understand that part of the KPI for chapter admin funding is that you must, each chapter must at least be part of a regional quarterly meeting all the time and stuffs like that. Is it possible that we include CHAC? CHAC having a representative appointed to CHAC as well as attendance of the CHAC meeting as part of the new KPI that maybe I think you were talking of planning to increase participation at the level of CHAC? Would you be open to that? And maybe if you feel that it's a good thing, Cheryl?
Oh, I think any pressure that can be brought to bear on the chapters to encourage them to appoint a representative is important. I think we also need to recognize that as elections occur and changeovers happen in chapters, this is one of those things that may not be picked up on. So there might be some in-service training and some gentle guidance required at the regional level to assist our chapters, particularly if you have a wholesale change in the leadership and governance of a chapter, to know that this is something they should be doing. The other thing is, and certainly something that we did, I prepared a PowerPoint, and many of the CHAC Steering Committee were able to use that in their regional meetings, was to show briefly for those regional meetings a value proposition as to why it is a very good idea to have a CHAC rep, other than just the KPIs aspect. And perhaps some modification of that and use in 2025 to explain the good reasons behind it will also help.
Thank you, Caleb, for the question. I will take that back to the team as we're looking at. We're heading into chapter valuation period very soon. And as you said, we're trying to find ways to ensure that all, a wide range of chapter activities are counted. So certainly, participation in the check seems a chapter activity, at least on the face of it. So let me take that on board, and I'll let you know.
And if I can just follow that up with a real thanks from the board for all of the data. It's really very handy to see all of the data gathering and to be able to present this in a much more structured fashion. There's been sort of anecdotal discussion of this over the years, which really hasn't made a lot of progress. And seeing the work that the check has done to really bring data behind this has been very, very useful. Thank you very much for that, April.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I must say, many of us do like data-driven decision-making. So that's a good thing to see that the Board of Trustees is equally excited about the possibility. If you would indulge me for just one moment, I would like to thank the Board of Trustees for their trust in my leadership of the Chapter Advisory Council over the last two years. And to let you know, this is the last time you'll have to put up with me, at least in this capacity, because I am not standing and therefore am stepping down from anything to do with the CHAC Steering Committee. I'm still being a CHAC. But I won't be engaged in the CHAC Steering Committee. So you won't have to put up with my dulcet tones and irritable nature after the end of the calendar year.
Well, we definitely will miss your dulcet tones, and we disagree that you have an irritable nature. And I know the trustees will join me in thanking you.
Thank you very much.
I don't know about the irritable nature. I see the background you have. It's pretty scary.
Meant to be. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time. Bye-bye for now.
And take care. The next item on the agenda is a community report from Glenn Dean, who we have carefully explained is from an independent organization, but is still kind enough to come and explain how the work of the ITF Trust or in its new incarnation, the ITF IPR community, you're going to explain this.
Well, it's in the slides, so you're being a great opening act.
Leap in then.
Hello, and Lauren, is there a link I can put up to put up slides to like a Zoom? Oh, okay, sure. One second. Hey, they're on their way. While we're waiting for that. Hi, I'm Glenn Dean. I'm the Chair of the IHF Trust. And these days also the President of the Intellectual Property Management Corporation, which is the fancy new name for the IHF Trust. I see we also have a couple trustees in the room, so they're going to keep me honest. Hello, Victor. Hello, Kathleen. And any others lurking that I can't see? And we got Russ down there, former trustee. So let me preface. Over the last couple of years, the IHF Trust has been undergoing a transformation from a Virginia Trust, which was set up in two thousand and five to a Delaware-based not-for-profit corporation. The reason we've been doing this transformation is that over time, the legal structure of being a trust was not working really well for the organization. A couple of reasons for that. The first is that the the use of trusts in the United States by families with a lot of money who like to sue each other for managing generational wealth created a problem in the insurance market for the officers of the trust in that we do have insurance, but our ability to increase the insurance coverage amounts to stay in pace with inflation was blocked because insurance companies were not increasing amounts. And the marketplace for insurance for trusts had gone from a number of being serviced by a number of providers down to last I heard, two companies were actually issuing certificates of insurance for trusts in the United States. And so we were facing the real risk that we would get into the situation where we would not be able to obtain proper insurance coverage for the trust or for the trustees. That, of course, is not a workable situation, and we have had people that were potential trust members say they wouldn't participate being trustees because of the the personal liability they would be taking on. Fortunately, corporations have a different liability structure for their officers. And so one of the reasons we undertook the transformation to a corporation was so that we could obtain proper insurance and we could also put a proper distance between the assets, the ownership management of them, and the responsibilities for individual trustees. And and these days, as they're known as directors. If anybody has any questions about that, this has been a long thing. We've done a community consultation starting. Oh, gosh, I think we started in twenty twenty two, and we held video chats, did various sessions during I've meeting, I T F meetings, come to the ISOC trustees here and talked about it, talked about NRO's large community engagement on that, reasons behind the transformation, and a lot of question and answers has taken. So hopefully that's behind us. Where we're at right now, let's see, can we go back to?
I don't know if this is, okay, it is working. So to clarify one point, the trustees did not have any protection. We were personally liable, and it wasn't a matter of changing over the insurance. It was how the insurance structure worked. And if anyone went after the trust, each of the trustees would have personal liability associated with that. So it's a little little different of a nuance than what Glenn said, probably because he said this too many times.
Although I will point out, we do have insurance. We're not completely.
Well, right, but it doesn't cover the individuals. And so if the IETF trust were hit with something, we would be individually liable, and that was the big issue.
Yeah, we carry a lot of individual liability to be a trustee. You take a lot on your shoulders when you sign on to be a trustee. Hopefully, that's only good the case. We're changing that. Laura, can you go back to the very beginning? Show so slides of who is a trustee? So obviously, there's myself, we have Kathleen, Victor, John Peterson, and Kristen Burden are the current trustees of the IPM. And you'll notice we now have this new term IPM. Next slide, please. This is IGF stuff. I I the IGF had come to us a little while back and said, hey, the trust seems really boring, and we don't hear from you guys a lot. Could we hear from you more? And we said, sure, what would you like to hear about? They said, well, we'd like to really know about how many licenses you're writing and all that kind of stuff. So we've now started at every I T F reporting out how many licenses have been written. As you can see, we have had two licensing requirements queries. We wrote zero RFC licenses. Again, we typically write zero RFC licenses because of the way the licensing terms are structured, they're passive. So the I T F can go off and use everything we do anyways. And we did issue one trademark license related to the restructuring work we're doing. I'll talk about that in a minute. But it's essentially the IPMC license back to the I T F trust, the ability to use IANA marks and issue IANA marks usage to ICANN and IANA. And we haven't, we've neither sued or have been sued since the last report out of I T F one twenty, and which is the long story of not being sued. So let's keep this up. Next slide, please. The trust is very boring. Once we get done with restructuring, it it's going to be even more boring. So one of the things that came out of the restructuring was we had originally applied and and requested permission to continue using the name trust in our operations. We, you know, we've been doing this since two thousand and five. We have a a brand established around it. We've got a track record around the word trust. But in the end, the the state of Delaware said, no, we're not going to allow you to name a corporation with the word trust in it. We tried very hard to find a path to continue using the label trust, so because the I T F community knows the name. We really tried. We work with with ourselves and with our attorneys to try to find a path. In the end, we decided to pull the Band-Aid off and just rename the darn thing. So there's two new names we're introducing. Obviously, we have the Intellectual Property Management Corporation, which is the name of the Delaware-based corporation. It's going to be using legal notices such as copyright, where we have to send out emails saying, please stop infringing on our stuff. You know, thank you, please. And and that usually works pretty well. Correspondence and taxes, we use the IPMC name. One of the things we found as we were doing this exercise is when you start unraveling all the I I T F RFCs, other documentation explaining the process of how you assign rights to this thing that holds rights for the I T F and for other parties. What are we going to call it? The original documentation used the term I T F trust literally. That, of course, means now that we've changed the name and we've become a corporation, you have to go change all those documents. For future exercises, we've decided to simply have a term called the Intellectual Property Management, I T F Intellectual Property Management or IPM. That will be used in process documentation. So next time somebody decides to change it to something else, it's all done. There's a level of indirection. That's all there is. So one's IPM for processes and reports. The other one's IPMC when we want to do legal stuff. So hopefully you'll hear a lot from the IPM. Hopefully, you'll never hear from the IPMC, because if it is, it means we're sending you an assing grant or filing taxes for you. All right, next slide, please. And that all makes sense, right? I mean, no weirdness there. So practical details, this is, we'll be talking to the I T F about this during their plenary. But really, the the changes that have taken place are at the very top, we've changed the I T F trust from a Virginia common trust to this new Intellectual Property Management entity backed by the IPMC Delaware Not-for-Profit Corporation. They're both five oh one C three, so they're both nonprofits. We have a legacy website, trustees@itf.org. We're going to have a new website, itf-ipm.org. That domain exists, but we haven't populated it yet. A lot of people forget about the stuff that came many years ago. On the left-hand side here, the I T F, when it was evolving its intellectual property management framework, went through a number of iterations. The trust itself was created in two thousand and five, but in, you know, the period of two thousand and eight through two thousand and nine, there was a rapid series of evolutionary changes made around the trust legal provisions and the structure and how IP was going to be managed in the I T F. We had a very stable period from twenty fifteen through twenty twenty five. We're going to do another one of these. We're going to iterate that. And so today, the trust legal provisions is essentially the licensing outbound. We call it, it's it's the outbound licenses we use. Everyone knows it as the trust legal provisions. It's interesting, if you look at the old draft versions of this from the lawyers involved, it didn't used to be called that. Trust was, gosh, it was a Paul's, I think it was the the trust legal policy or document or something like that. They they even thoroughly had renamed it. We're going to play a bit of a game with renaming it. Because people know this term T L P, we've decided to call the next generation of it the Technical Legal Provisions so that we can keep the lovely acronym T L P. And as you see on the left, we've got versions one through five. We're going to start at version six with the trust legal provisions, so that when you look at this, you say, what version of T L P matters? The numbering is going to be consistent, and so will the acronym of T L P. We need to be cognizant of that, because if you notice that note down at the bottom, the T L P, the licensing provisions and the IP rights at the time of submission of a document to the I T F or the publishing of an I T F standard continue to follow whatever was in place when that was done. So when we make a new version of this, we don't go back and update all the old ones. They just continue on. And so now we have a legacy that will continue on forever, and it's been, we've been working like that for twenty years. We're just going to keep doing it. So nothing new here, just a a new version. And then finally, we will be, if you're familiar with the I T F, everyone talks about RFC fifty three seventy eight. Those are the rights that authors grant to the I T F when they submit a document. We're going to create a new version of that one, and it'll get updated. That's a work in progress, but nothing new here. As you can see on the left, we went through a series of them from nineteen ninety two through two thousand and seven. It's just been a bit of a quiet period. A lot of people have forgotten this history. Next slide, please. And I I did warn you, the trust stuff is really boring, right? So I hopefully meet the expectation. Other practical details, if you've ever read an I T F RFC, you are familiar with the copyright statement. Copyright insert year, I T F trust, yah, 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 yah. This is at the top of every modern document that is both submitted and published. That's going to change in a big way. It's going to say Intellectual Property Management Corporation instead of I T F trust. So next slide, please. One big word we're trying to get out, and we're going to be getting out, and Russ, I know you love tools, so pay attention here. The tools need to make an update. So we I T F, both inside the the I T F tools team, but also the broader community, has developed a lot of automated tools that insert the boilerplate that I just showed you automatically when you publish a document or you render it or re-restructure it. So we're getting the word out now. We're starting here at this meeting. You need to make a change. There's a cutoff date which we will set. We're going to try to work with the tools team so that it's a reasonable cutoff date. But if you are a tool owner, yes, should be aware and start putting your plans that you will need to make an update of your boilerplate. It's coming, and it will come in early two thousand and five, twenty twenty five, sorry. I had hoped to get it done by December thirty first, because I thought January one, twenty twenty five would be a nice cutoff date. But I don't think we're going to make it. It's it's a it's a large lift for all the tools people. And we've been working with the I T F tools team for a while now, but it's a lot of work. They've got a lot of automation built in these days, and it's a lot of places for them to touch. So we're going to make sure they get it right, and we're going to give them the time to get the job done, but it's coming. Next slide, please. So here's the the final restructuring pieces that we're working on right now for this task. Yes, we started the restructuring a while ago. The 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 five trustees are all volunteers, so we do this as a part of our day job. This is not our day job. We also don't have a large staff that we just say, oh, restructure it and let us know when it's done. So it's taken us a little more than a year. We've been, you know, working away at it since the creation of the corporation back in December of twenty twenty three. But we're near the, we can see the the light at the end of the tunnel. So we have some I T F related stuff for the IDs and RFCs, is publishing the new website I mentioned, updating the T L P and the RFC fifty three seventy eight replacement. And over on the IANA side, which I'm sure people in the room here care about, and we're going to need your signature from somewhere here. In fact, we might need a couple of signatures. We have three agreements that were created when the IANA transition took place. We have been working with CCG on getting one of the steps in there. There's a provision there that says the CCG needs to approve for the transfer of the three IANA trademarks and a few domains. And I think when it was drafted, it was really meant for transferring outside of the I T F trust. In this case, we're transferring from the five trustees to the five trustees, but we're we're still working through that process to get that approval. And then the other part of this is, there is three agreements that are put in place. We have assignment signatures required for that. Once we get the CCG stuff done, we're going to come knocking on the various doors and say, hey, could you please sign this stuff to assign the agreements? These are agreements already in place. They're just agreements that say, look, trust, this is what you're going to do for IANA. This is acknowledging that we're still going to do that. We're not making any changes to the role we play or how we do it. Or, you know, practically, the only change is we are assigning the ownership of the assets from one legal entity controlled by the I T F trustees to an identical practical legal entity for operations sake, also controlled by the same trustees. So nothing else is changing. We're not changing intellectual property rules. We're not changing the protections we offer to the IANA or the community, which, by the way, we do things like if I can, IT wants to make a change to the domains. They need three trustees to say, yes, you can change that domain name record, and we approve it, and then they go make the change. It happens maybe two or three times a year. So that's the kind of stuff we do. But that's it. And that's it. And then if you're still hanging around here the rest of the week, next slide. We will be having office hours. Oh, there's one thing. After we get all that done, we're going to shut this thing down, and we shut down the Virginia Trust. Turns out, there's no real form you filled saying we're stopping this. You just stop doing things. But we've asked the lawyers repeatedly, and they said, yeah, there's no form you fill. You just stop doing things as a trust. But we're going to shut it down. Next slide. And finally, if you want to come and hang out with a trustee or an IPM director, you can come on Thursday to Wicklow in Multi Room Four. That is not Wicklow. That is the Barnes Gallery in Philadelphia. But it's a nice little stock slide that I took the picture of, and I own the intellectual property rights too, so I can use it like this. Anyways, that's it, and I'll be here all week. So if anybody wants to hang with a trustee, or you've got a couple in the room already, feel free to let me know. I'm happy to hang and talk about the really boring stuff the trust does.
Thank you very much for for the report. I do have one quick question. There was some discussion on one of the related mailing lists for the Internet Society about how the I T F trust is funded. And I believe that in the past, there were contributors to the I T F trust in addition to the I T F LLC or ISOC. Is that going to continue in the new IPMC where you're going to seek contributions? Or how's that work?
That's a very good question. So historically, the largest amount of money, if you go way back, came from the Internet Society. It was an annual request that was made, and the society funded it. But the, as an independent legal entity in a five one C three, the trust is able to accept donations and did. For a period there, after the I A S A transition in in I T F, the trust started engaging in its own direct fundraising. I I know that when you're a time you're at Google, you would, your Google had provided some funds, NBC Universal provides some funds, the Anna Rose have provided funds through the years. And so we did do fundraising. The problem we ran into whilst we were doing fundraising was that at the exact same time, the I T F LLC was out knocking on doors and saying, would you please help fund the I T F? And people were getting confused because the trust would come along and say, you know, we could use some fundraising. Could you give us ten thousand dollars? Or could you give us twenty thousand dollars? And the LLC would come along and say, hi, we're the LLC. Could you give us a couple hundred thousand dollars to a few million dollars? And apparently it was creating some confusion because we were both called I T F. And so we entered, we we had our tax people look on both sides, look through it. The the ISOC tax people worked with the trust's tax people. We had tax people. And they said, yes, the trust is able to accept a hundred percent of its funding goals from ISOC through the LLC. So that's how we today receive our primary funding. After this transition, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. It's not a big, big ticket item. But we will, of course, while we're not soliciting funds, we will accept funds. And occasionally we do get funds. We have an Amazon account, so if you if you buy stuff and you designate Amazon as a, you know, that that deal Amazon does, they'll send us a check every once in a while. And then other parties will occasionally send us a check for a thousand dollars to two thousand or ten thousand dollars through the years. They just pop in. But we are not actively engaged in fundraising like we were in the past.
Okay, so you don't have an issue then where you have to maintain a public support by getting a variety of different things, because you're a different five oh one C three category than we are.
Well, I had hoped you wouldn't ask me that question. The answer is, we are good, but because we tie our 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 ship to your ship by accepting our primary funding source being through the I T F LLC, which is, of course, part of ISOC. If you have a public support challenge, we have a public support challenge because we drive ours through you. And this was done, again, the, I'm not a tax guy. We had an actual tax attorney talk to your actual accounting tax people. They they considered it, looked at it. This was be, this would be when we were in London, London, the last I T F London. Uh, this was be, this would be when we were in London, um, Lon, the last I T F London meeting. When was that? Twenty?
Four years ago.
About four years ago. We, we had this whole large discussion. Jay was involved. I know the I S O C people at the time were involved. They talked about my tax attorneys and apparently structure allowed for it.
So there, there.
That's what I was told.
There are different categories of five oh one.
Yes.
C three and there's like a category like the one I can is in, for example, which would allow them to, to take funding. But maybe let's refresh before we get all those signatures that, let's refresh that discussion. Uh, because uh, I think my information was stale on that. And I think I was still thinking of the case like when NBC Universal and Google, et cetera, were helping make sure it wasn't all coming from.
Right.
Um, one thing, but uh, sounds like an action item for the.
Yeah, we totally can, can reopen that game. Uh, I'm not a tax person without, so we actually in, 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 include real tax attorneys. Yeah. Look at this and I know we provide them both with the I S O C uh.
Nine ninety.
Documents and we provide them with the I T F trusts and now the uh, the, the new entities, tax documents. And they looked at and gave a lawyer lawyer conversation and said, you're good to go. So.
Okay.
Uh, we can always revisit.
I think it would be valuable, um, because uh, the question did come from the community and the, uh, it turns out the answer I gave was stale. So I'll have to go back.
Fair enough. And obviously we want to make sure everybody's uh honoring their requirements to be, continue their uh tax free status. It's an important thing. So I don't want to ma- make ever make light of it. All right. Well, it's the report. Any questions or comments?
Oh, Barry.
Barry.
Barry and Russ.
All right. So uh, as one of the C C G members from a third that is not causing you problems, what, what are, what are you still waiting for from the C C G at this point?
Um, so uh, what we need from C C G is essentially uh, an approval uh for the, the transfer of the three trademarks. And I think it's, I thought I may say it's four domains, five domains. There's, there's a couple of domains that we, we are like I A N A dot org versus one of the domains.
I guess the question was really what, what is delaying that at this point?
Uh. I'm not entirely sure. I, I understand that there was a shortage of one C C G chair. And, and so Greg Shatan has uh, it, it told me that that appointment has now been made. And that, that should help uh move things along in approvals. I will be at I can next week and, and hopefully talk to Greg. Uh, and hopefully we're just moving along. Uh, so, so what we're talking about is in the I N agreement, there was a clause, I think it's uh four point two one, which if you're, I'll tell you, if you're ever going to write an agreement and you're going to bury a requirement for somebody to go get approval, don't stick to any clause four point two one because it, it's not where you go looking for like, and here's the thing you gotta do. Uh, when we were doing the assignments of the uh various assets, one of them was we were reviewing the assignment agreements for the three agreements I mentioned when we did the I A N A stuff. Uh, after we had done the trademarkers uh move, because the trademark actually has already moved. The, the trademarks have for I A N A and the other three have moved over to the I T F um, uh, Intellectual Property Management Corporation. We did that last March. We then found this clause and we went, oh gosh, we need the C C G's approval. Why did anybody bury this requirement to get approval down in section four point two one? Uh, and so we then said, well, look, our bad. We, we apologize. Can we please get this approval? We sent that back. I think it was July or June or July. Um, and so we've been going back and forth on that process, back and forth. The one licensing thing I mentioned that we did do uh was because of that transfer, some people had raised the concern, the community, oh, well, then the I T F trusts, if it's already transferred the asset over to the Intellectual Property Management Corporation itself, the agreements it had written to, uh, things are no longer valid. We said, well, yeah, they are because it's the same people. We're never going to enforce them, right? Well, we'd feel more comfortable if you put a licensing back in place. So we did that. We put a licensing back in place, which hopefully takes care of that. So the trust can license the stuff that it used to license uh successfully. As for the rest of the delays, I'm not entirely sure why we're having approved yet. Uh, we're ready to accept your approval of the C C G. Uh, and, and, and so when I get the green light saying, yes, we're going to do it, we will send over a for, a formal note saying, you know, we are formally requesting this. Please sign here and send it back.
So the, the short answer though is that you're going to talk to Greg next week in Istanbul and sort that out and yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, there's some truth in that. The longer the answer, uh, the, 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 the less clear the path sometimes. But I think that's generally the gist of it. Um, but it should be done hopefully darn soon because it's, it's a pretty trivial thing.
Okay, thanks. Russ, did you?
I'll just uh, my comment uh overlapped Barry's. So uh, I would just say that of the three communities that make up the C C G, you already have I T F approval or protocol parameters approval. Um, and numbering approval, we're just waiting on domain name approval.
Uh, I will say that we have a very broad and interesting community that spans the internet community. Uh, and, and we, we get a lot of people with some interesting questions. Um, I, I will also say we still continue to have a problem. I, I, as part of this process, I'm, and it's a bit of a complaint here, not, and by the way, none of the people in this room here. But during this process, I have received some email uh accusing the trust of, of, of having un, un, undeclared like uh agendas and secret things. Let me categorically say, we don't. We, this is a trivial, this is uh, uh, on the surface what it is. We are transferring assets from one entity that is the, to the new entity, which is a restructured legal home of the same entity. Uh, there's nothing being changed here. There's nothing, uh, no agendas, no underhandedness. At the end of the day, when the assets get moved over, they will be protected in the exact same way, with the exact same diligence as they have been since the I A N A. Sorry, yeah, the I A N A, I S I A N A, I A N A transition took place. Uh, what was it? Twenty eighteen, I think it was. So they are going to continue to be protected in just the same way by the exact same people who are pointed through the exact same process that they have been since uh for years. So have no worries.
Just to back up what Glenn was saying, in terms of what um back chatter, uh, from my observations, it's people that think we're having executive sessions that aren't happening. Um, so they think there's more happening than there is. The trust really is boring.
It really, really, really is truly boring. It's so. If you ever want to experience boredom, become a trustee. And by the way, next year is uh noncomm and, and you appoint a person from here. Feel free to volunteer. We, we, we'd be glad to have you. Anyways, thank you for listening to me and if you want any more questions, come talk to us.
A quick addition, Russ and I will both be in uh Istanbul also. So if you need our help, oh, Russ will not, I will.
Okay.
So if you need my help as a C C G member, just let me know.
So I just heard A, you'll help me in Istanbul. And B, if anything goes wrong, we can blame Russ because he's not there.
That's right.
Okay, perfect.
With that plan, I think uh, we have come to the end of this topic. Thank you very much, Glenn. Uh, uh, see you around for the rest of the meeting. Um, we have one more item before our break and that is uh the update from the uh committee reports and the governance committee report in particular. Charles.
So basically, I think we discussed the board and officer code of uh ethics in our uh governance committee. And uh, let's see. So do we need to uh present to the, we need to discuss?
Could we, so we, the red line of the book, can we have associated with resolution?
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Yeah. Sorry about it. I overlooked this part about the reporting to the uh, to the board of the uh, uh, for the, for the code of actors that to be discussed. I think this is shared to all of you and uh, I don't want to go through all the details. I just want to go see if you have any. The red line. Yeah. Oh, yeah, it's red here. Okay. Yeah. So this is the part that we have been updated, right? So uh, the requirement for adding the part about the modern slavery and human trafficking. And I don't want to read this part. You have it in your, in your uh body fact information. So we just want to see if there's any question or discussion about this particular part. I think it's pretty standard for organizations these days. So any questions?
So I did have a small question on the, the, the other part of this, which is the reporting.
The, the one below eight point oh. Yeah. Can we go down to that? Yeah, the question is?
Uh, so just to save ourselves some trouble, if uh, there's a, a change in operator, if we, if we went away from Navex and picked somebody else, um, couldn't, could we list it um, in a way that, that lists the web-based incident report uh, and the phone number on the relevant webpage dedicated to the applicable country? So we can just update the webpage rather than update the resolution? Um, if we, if we picked somebody other than Navex in the future? So that would be kind of a minor change. We would just say, and an independent ethics hotline provided to the Internet Society where reports can be made anonymously or openly via a web-based incident report. If we just leave out Navex's name functionally, then we can update the web-based incident report or the pointer to the phone numbers uh, and give us the option to, to change.
To change the operator.
Without having to do another resolution.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. Okay. So any other questions? No?
Uh, do you want to do the resolution for this one now and then do the policy for policies? Or do you want to do the policy for policies and then both resolutions?
Should we do it now? I don't.
Okay, why don't we do it now? Uh, the resolution reads, approve the amended board of trustees and officer code of ethics. Resolve that the Internet Society Board of Trustees approves the amended board of trustees and officer code of ethics as presented. Uh, is there anybody who would move the motion, please? Uh, Caleb, and then I saw Funky uh next. Uh, any discussion? Okay, um, if those in favor could raise their hand and Laura remotely, if you could raise your hand in the tool. If you are I. Inconsiderate that we're uh completeness, are there any abstains? Any opposed? Uh, seeing known the motion passives. Uh, thanks very much. Uh, let's move on to the policy for policies.
The next item is the uh policy on policies, which is sort of something new that we added, that we want to add because I think previously we did not have a established policy management framework. And we believe that this is something that's needed for future development, sort of a framework to guide the development of various policies and procedures. So we have a document uh, which is next. Scroll down. So this is a draft that has been shared again, a long document that uh, yep, want to see if there's any discussion, uh, questions that you might have. Yeah. So basically setting out all the uh procedures, who would own the uh, uh, policies and the responsibilities and uh, the standard of developing policies and the procedures related. How it should be formatted and so on. Any question? Yep, Victor.
I'd kind of thought about this late. The, the only thing maybe under the procedure format is maybe include drafted date, initial drafted date. It, it shows effective date. I'm just throwing out there. It's just more like a, I'm nitpicking. That's it.
Okay. Right? Uh, 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 any, no objections, right, for the, for the suggestion from Victor?
Yeah, similar to Victor's comment. I didn't see in here anything that, like the status of the policy. It has an effective date, but you know, policies can be withdrawn, negated.
Like a termination?
I must have missed it then. Probably good for reading these things on the airplane.
Okay, okay.
Perhaps I missed it too, but what are the review dates? Like policies sometimes are like strategy documents where you have three to five years. So what are, how often will this policy, all policies, the policy itself, the policies themselves and the policy of how often will they be reviewed? Just to keep in trends with emerging issues across the globe.
Yeah, yeah, I can answer that. Thanks for the question, Funky. So um, the, we actually right now currently have policies and they're um reviewed on an annual basis. What we didn't have is this on an annual basis. Yep. So there is a, a workflow that's set up and we also use Navex for that as a tool. Um, they're set up in Navex and we have a workflow set up for uh periodic um, uh reviews. Most of them are annual, some of them maybe on a, on a different schedule. But um, it doesn't mean that they're changing annually. It just means that they have to be reviewed to make sure that we're compliant with laws, that we are still following the right processes. Uh, if there are any changes, um, like for example, in, you know, reporting structure, all of that is taken into account. What we didn't have, and we appreciate the governance committee taking up that work and thank you for the board, to the board for looking at this on policy on policies. What we didn't have is the framework around how everything should be structured and make sure that we have um, all that proper structure in place. So we had policies, just not the framework that kind of governs all of that.
The only question then is whether or not this is ref, it has to be clearly referred in this document or not. The, the annual reporting requirement.
Uh, it, it, no, this is more for the internal operations, correct? So the board setups the framework and then internally will set up the cadence for reviews.
Okay. Sally?
Uh, just to go to uh Brian's uh question about policies that have been retired. There is a section on retirement and those, if a policy, if a policy has been retired, it would go into the archive. So it could be findable. So we have a mechanism for doing that. Um, and I just want to take this opportunity to reiterate what Alona said. What we're trying to do at the Internet Society is mature the organization and a strong and clear and predictable policy environment is, is key to that. So that policies are updated on a cycle, so that there's clear owners and responsibilities and accountability um, for, for all of the policies um, that make up the Internet Society. So this is really helpful to set that high level framework in which we can um, work within and report back to the board.
Any other questions? No? Do, do we also have a res- resolution for this, right? Do we have to change, to wait for the tweaks to be updated or we can go ahead with the?
No, we can go ahead because it's as presented and the tweaks were discussed in the meeting. So the. so are you ready to call?
Yeah, I think we are, right? If there's then no more questions and discussion about this.
Okay, the resolution reads approve the policy on policy resolved that the Internet Society Board of Trustees approves the policy on policies as presented. May I ask someone to move the motion? Barry and Caleb was second. Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, may I ask all those in favor to raise their hand either here in the room or via the tool? Thank you very much. Any abstain? Any opposed? Seeing none, the resolution passes. Thanks very much. Before we break, Sagurica, you'd you'd raised a question. Do you want to speak to that question now?
Yeah, I'm just wondering about the the community standards, community communication policy. Do we? I don't think we do have like policy on that, like specific policy on that. So I'm wondering that are we going to set up that or? So as Sally mentioned that we you are passing in that into a governance committee to set up the
So just two things, just to disambiguate. So there is a code of conduct which applies to the whole organization. So from some extent, the communication among members is governed by
Communication among like it's three, three tires, right? One is communication among trustees and the staff. Communication among trustees and the community. And both trustees, staff and the community. So how are we going to do that? There should be certain standards should be met. Otherwise, like everybody is demanding for the transparency for everything. So that's not the way to do like we do have to have like boundaries. That that's my personal opinion. I don't know whether that's agree or not.
I think I misunderstood what you were asking. So I think what you're you're asking is, are there going to be policies which describe the transparency requirement?
Transparency, yes.
I see. Okay.
Specifically on that.
So I think that there's been some discussion of that. I'm going to ask Sally, but then possibly Charles will want to weigh in as the chair.
Yeah. So we staff have asked the Governance Committee to consider this question of transparency, particularly around legal documents and financial documents. And and to give us some guidance and possibly come to the to the full board with a recommendation of how to approach that. One of the things that General Counsel has has provided to the Governance Committee is benchmarking the kind of information that we already provide against other similarly positioned organizations, either in the Internet ecosystem or within a broader nonprofit, global nonprofit environment. This work has just begun within the Governance Committee. And I think we'll be on the agenda for the next meeting of that committee. So I I think that is an important step to address concerns around transparency. We are committed to transparency. I think there are some things we can do as staff to improve transparency of the information we already provide to the community and make it easier to find. And that's something we're committed to doing in short order. But I think there's a broader question about is are there further steps that we should take? And I think to your point, Sagurica, it's you know, measured against, you know, risk and and other factors, fiduciary responsibility that trustees have to the organization and all of those things need to be taken into account as we discuss that. Charles, do you want to say more? Thanks.
Yeah, I I just got the preliminary. You know, I think the information from Elona this morning and about the you know, that we're going to be further discussing within the Governance Committee without going into that detail, which includes the comparison with the similar organization, the Internet space or other organizations. I just also wanted to say that to me, it seems like transparency could be more than just what we disclose in terms of all these policies or financial reports and all these stuff. But also how we are going to be helping the communities and the public to get these information. You know, they may not know where to find them. And even if they struck code on our website or other sources to try to get them, they may not fully understand them. So I think when we discussed within the Governance Committee, I'm going to be also you know, hoping to discuss and propose maybe that we would hold certain kind of you know, like educational or or outreach sessions to help people understand what they are. You know, otherwise, you know, understandably, some of them, you know, is out there. They may not know where to find it, even if they find it, they may not, they find, okay, it's 200 pages. They don't read it. Or how to help them understand what it's really about. And I think that is also important. If we want to improve the transparency. And then otherwise, you know, they'll keep on asking similar questions and then we say, oh, it's already out there, you know, and and so on. It will keep going into the same loop. That's yeah.
Okay.
Okay, it's on. Some of those really emails really sort of bothered me because I mean, I responded to one of the emails. Sally, I think responded also. And for me, it bothers a lot on our credibility and also integrity as a board. And we need to really address this headlong. I was shocked that those questions also came up, especially since I joined. I know that the meetings are always on Zoom. So people, at least the open sessions, people are allowed to join. So there might be some other deeper issues that certain individuals are really not coming out to talk about. And these are just opportunities to just raise dust. And so if it's possible, like Charles said, rather than saying, okay, these documents are available, they're here, there are ways to engage these persons or groups to really find out what the issues are and that there's special sessions that could be curated to address them. My third point also, as someone who is very involved in board governance is to create frequently asked questions from some of these questions that have come up because they won't go away. Even if those individuals are convinced or confused, as case may be, there will be others that will come up. So are there facts that we can create, you know, in the future or as they come up, we keep adding to the list. If people ask these questions, these are the links. This is where you can go and they can find it that we're transparent. We have nothing to hide. Because we have so much to do, you know, whether as Sally and her team internally and as board members, this isn't a full time role to begin to put out fires as they come. But if we have curated frequently asked questions that add some of these sessions, some of these issues to it, and we can develop them as they go. My last point will be on, I think, and I don't know if I mentioned it earlier, we had a special sessions that we can really have, like an open day. Which we tried in a previous role that I've been in, which was a membership organization and of women, market women. So if you think you're having trouble wear my shoes for a day, it was for market women who felt that many of us who were educated were taking them for a ride. We don't explain things too well and we were just you know, covering them with big grammar and all that. And so we had open days where community members can actually engage with the board. I don't know if this is the time for it, but just something I felt to put on the table and then we can consider it. Thank you.
I thank you very much. Before we break for a moment, I just wanted to pick up on one of the things you said, and that's about commitment to transparency. Obviously, we are committed to transparency and there's really two things around that. One, it's just the right thing to do. And the other is it really helps people find their way to engaging with the mission. In most of the cases, the more transparent we are, the more likely it is somebody will engage with the mission of the society because they'll understand it better. There are limits, right? I mean, the fiduciary responsibility we have in respect to P R is an example that we'll have later today. Because it's running a business, our ability to disclose their budget is very limited. And some of what they disclose to us is, as a result, confidential. And so we do have to do some things which are confidential. And finding that balance, I think, is is part of what we need to do. The other thing I will say is there's a great deal of what we do that, as Glenn Dean so feelingly put it about his own work, is a bit boring. And, you know, engaging with the community on the pieces that we don't think they're going to care about is kind of a waste of both ours and the community's time. And that has occasionally hit us in in later things where people like, well, you were not open with us about it. And it's like, wasn't an intention not to be open with you. It was just, we thought this was inside baseball, right? When we restructure something inside this, we're not changing the mission. We're not changing the role you have in it. We're not doing any of that. It's just we conceive of it as internal and not therefore very interesting. And I think we've been surprised at the extent to which some members of the community have expressed interest in things which are deeply inside baseball. And I think we have to figure out a way to make sure that we continue to focus on engaging them in the mission as we like work out how we do that, because there's definitely some pieces where releasing 200 pages of document and saying digest this and and you'll understand is is not not actually helping people. Because they're like, well, before I get to the mission, I have this homework. I was going to build the Internet, but now I have to read this. And so we have to be a little bit careful. So definitely more discussion needed on that. But before that, we're going to take a short break for people to refresh themselves and we will be back in 10 minutes at 10:43 Dublin time.
Thank you. We'll get the slides up, please. Thank you. All right, so we have three different sections to the CEO report. If we can go to the next slide. The first, I would like to update you as we come to the end of our 2020 to 2024 strategy. We want to walk you through some of the impacts that we have seen over the last five year period. So that we can celebrate those, turn the page and look forward to beginning our next five year strategy. The next part will be an update on where we are in our action plan for 2024 and some results. And then finally, I'll provide you an update on the accessibility policy and framework. All right, so 2020 to 2024 strategy impact. Some of you, I think many of the trustees understand that we have been operating within an existing five year strategy. And we've seen some really good results over the last five years. If we can move to the next slide, please. This is a composite view of our impact snapshot where locations around the world where the Internet Society built, promoted and defended the Internet between 20 and between 2020 and 2024. You'll see the legend on the left and we'll go through some of these in more detail. But what you see is activity of this organization across the globe. Ranging from training to building infrastructure to advocating for an open, globally connected and secure Internet for everyone all across the globe. And we're tremendously proud of this work. I want to emphasize that this is not representative of just staff activities. This is a representation of the Internet Society, which is a community, right? A global community working together to build, promote and defend the Internet. Next slide. This is our community as it stands today by the numbers. We have over 100,000 individual members. 131 chapters and special interest groups and standing groups. 82 organization members, 97 partners, 325 alumni. This is a recent development. It's very exciting that we are now moving from just training people, but moving them into an alumni program. And so we expect to see this number grow. And 81% of our chapters received grant funding in addition to admin grants. So this is beyond the net, possibly community network funding or other kinds of funding that they would have received with support of the Internet Society Foundation. Next slide. So this is an overview of where we built the Internet, either through supporting and funding the establishment of community networks, Internet exchange points, and also really importantly, funding and support for technical communities around the world. Part of our model that's really important to understand is we are not coming in and just dropping in connectivity in hard to reach communities. What we try to do as well is ensure that there is a strong and robust local technical community that can help support the infrastructure, maintain it and ultimately defend it. So this is work that we do to support network operating groups, I X P associations and other technical organizations that are active at the local level with the infrastructure that they're supporting. And that has always been key to the Internet Society's model of connectivity. And you'll see here that the work that we did across these three areas spanned 74 countries. Next slide. In total, over the last five year period, we have supported 85 community networks with over $3 million in funds granted. 59 Internet exchange points have been supported, either established or ongoing support as those I X Ps develop and and grow in terms of traffic demand with over 1.4 million dollars in funds granted. And 41 sustainable technical communities have been supported with almost $200,000 worth of Internet Society funding. Next slide. I'm going to show you this video because it's, you may have seen it, I don't know, but in early, early in this strategy, the Truist Bank provided the Internet Society with a $2 million grant to connect the unconnected in the United States. In 2021 and 2022, we granted 11 grantees with funds to build community networks across the U S. These are in underserved communities, communities where connectivity passed them by for any number of reasons. In 2023, we then brought those community network leaders to the N A N O G meeting, the Network Operators Meeting of North America in order to allow them to come together and support their long term sustainability. This is also part of the model is connecting them with the technical community, in this case, N A N O G to ensure that they have a robust community of supporters. And now what we're able to do is see the impact of those investments at the end of the five year period. And so we're going to show you a video from a school in Florida that has benefited from this connectivity. Play that.
My name is Calvin Cameron. I'm in the seventh grade. And, um, wait, what was it again? I'm 12 years old. So before all this happened, I never had a computer at home, so I couldn't really get my assignments done at all. So I would have to like come back to school and try to explain to my teacher that I couldn't do it at home.
If you think about Gilbert, you think about where it's situated.
It is in the historic area of the east side of Jacksonville, Florida.
Right there in the heart of our city, because I do call it the heart. It's right there near downtown.
It is known for its high property area. It's just a number of barriers that they face with getting access to maybe fresh foods or even internet service.
You can't expect that students are going to compete at the same level if all of our textbooks are digital and some students have reliable internet access at home and some of them do not. So they're taking their laptops home and their modem home and they're able to get free internet access to their house using the tower that's right here on the campus.
Cellular network extension of the public school network out into the community.
It's the same internet, same security, same firewall, same protection. We would never have been able to put up this tower without the help of the Internet Society and also Truist Bank.
So to be able to now have internet access at home, I can now have tailored assignments to myself, to my skill level. And now the teacher can also say, no, I know, I know you have internet because you now have the power here.
When I was in sixth grade, I had missed a few assignments and then they had put it on Exact Path, which gave me access to use it at home with the Wi-Fi box. Whenever I'm behind, I can learn and then catch up using the computer that I had got.
We want to make sure that we expose them to every opportunity that they can possibly be exposed to.
We have to prepare them for jobs of the future and most and many of those jobs involve some sort of technology.
What I like about a school is like, we get opportunities to do different stuff.
Today's education without the internet, I don't even know what that would look like. We're always on our phone, we're always on a tablet or a computer. And why shouldn't every student have that ability?
So if people get computers, they can actually do work on there to bring up their career and stuff.
And studying more. They've been getting a lot better because last year I finished school without with A's and B's.
We are educating champions, every student, every day, every classroom.
We've been producing with with Truist the stories as a result of this grant that they generously provided to the Internet Society. And this is, I hope, what you will start to see more and more of from us, which is being able to talk about the stories of impact. Those take time, right? This grant was given at the beginning of this five-year strategy. The networks needed to be deployed. We needed to see that this would actually work. And so it takes time for this to happen. But these are really powerful stories of how the internet changes lives all over the world. And we hope that you'll see more of those coming coming from us going forward. So that's an overview of the grow work over the last five years, just a high-level snapshot. Are there any questions or comments on that before I move forward?
This isn't a comment, but those are just so great to see these stories. Thanks for sharing.
Yes, please. I always think when it's on green, then it's working. Just to say that some of these stories really puts a face, if that's the right word, behind some of the work that I S O C does. And it's easy beyond the numbers. You can actually see real people, real impact, real solutions. And I think stuff like this should come up more for people to see where the money is going. I have a project called Show Me The Money, and these are the kind of stories that you can really track where the change is coming from. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move to the next slide, please. This is a reflection of the work the Internet Society and our community have done across the globe to defend the Internet. This is the advocacy work that ranges from local efforts to educate and train policymakers, work in the United Nations, efforts to lobby or advocate legislatures or parliaments, and of course, regional work as well. And this is what we've been able to track. I do want to say that we're able to track this. I will tell you that collecting this data is a highly manual process today within the Internet Society. This is something we are hoping to change for the future that we can present this kind of data and show the range of our impact with a much sort of lower barrier to producing it. And that's part of the data architecture work that we hope to do over the next five-year period because it is quite challenging to collect this. I want to give a real nod to Katie and her team for doing that because it is important for us to all see, you know, again, the range and the scope of of our work. Caleb, I saw you had a question.
Just curious, most of the map I've seen of some of the impacts seem to be ignoring Russia, Mongolia and the rest part at the top side there. Is there any reason why we are not making any strides in that area? Geographically?
I, there are limits to where where we are allowed to operate in terms of national laws and in terms of, well, I will say that, and in terms of safety in some environments. So there's, there are challenges in certain political climates for what we are able to do. And insofar also as as the ability to even establish a chapter in those places. Charles, you look like you were about to.
Yeah, it's politics and it's also whether we can even fund anything in those countries, China, Russia and so on. Yeah, India is a little bit different, I think, but, you know, politically, it's just a matter of the laws restricting funds. But yeah, in in terms of Russia and China and so on, it's even worse.
Yeah. Yes, please. Got it this time. If they have chapters in some of these difficult to fund and, you know, politically complicated settings, if if there are existing chapters in there, are there ways to harvest some of the impact they're making as chapters, as, you know, individual chapters and still be able to report on that, not necessarily that I S O C is funding, then what I'm saying is if if some of these countries, for instance, have I S O C chapters that are active and, you know, internally with their own fund, they're able to do amazing stuff. Is there a way to harvest some of these outcomes and still, you know, showcase that as as something good coming from those regions? Rather than, you know, having anything to to sort of report because we're not able to fund them directly.
Yes, that's a great question. So for China, for example, we don't have a Internet Society chapter. So that and the same with Russia and the and the changes in in Russia over the last some years, we we simply can't can't operate there. So that is a difference. We are able, for example, in India, we have close ties with those chapters. We communicate a lot. You would have seen recently the message about their internet governance school that they just held, which is a fantastic program. And we have had staff in India. So there are ways for us to work there. We just, we have to be careful with respect to the laws. But if we can't fund, that does not mean we don't have a strong relationship with those those chapters and local advocates. So we would, we would represent them to the best of our ability in a in a chart like this. Charles?
Yes, and I I'm not sure whether this is something we can consider, but even for those countries that we're talking about, Russia, China and some others, even though we cannot operate within the country, there's probably some opportunity of the diasporal communities in those from those countries. There might be needs that they have in terms of, for example, some support in terms of helping them understand what to do with cybersecurity and so on. These are, these are themes that I think those communities keep on having. Of course, the sensitivity is that we might not want to get too political into these areas. But of course, in the past, you know, our community in terms of chapters are tied to the country or the region within the country. But there might be a possibility that there might be some communities where their their diasporal community might have needs. Whether or not they are interested in forming a chapter outside of their own country, that's the the next thing. Well, we don't probably allow that to happen currently anyway. And not proposing a change in there in that regard at the moment. But, you know, that's something that, I mean, the need may 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 become more and more apparent as we go on, which is unfortunate, but this is like, like the way that maybe the internet is moving into. So we might have to start thinking about that as well, the need of those communities.
Thanks, Charles. If I could follow up on that, I've actually done some work in Portugal with folks who came to Portugal from Ukraine. And there are clearly differences in some of their needs compared to the local population's needs. But I think there are a large number of commonalities between their needs and the needs of other communities, which are in either refugee populations or in diaspora communities. So I think what we might want to do there is instead of trying to focus on specific ones, trying to understand if there's some commonality. So, and I I think there's actually some academic work around this that we might be able to pull on. So maybe offline, you and I can talk about that and maybe suggest those academics might be able to apply to the foundation for 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 grants to examine it as as part of the the research granting program. But I think the, from I S O C's perspective, when we're when we're working with chapters, the each individual chapter then would draw on that knowledge that I S O C might develop through such a research approach to serve a community that's part of their geographic remit, right? I think we have to be very careful not to try and create something that's inside a territory where not everybody is included. But instead, to try and make sure that we are offering mechanisms to allow potentially newcomers to a territory to participate fully or those who are in refugee or diaspora communities to participate wherever they are as opposed to creating new communities specifically for them. I think that would be an approach that maybe we'd want to explore. Maureen?
Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry. Yeah, I'm just looking at the gaps and there's a big hole in the in the Pacific. Just remembering that within the Pacific, that the the Internet Society covers the 18 countries that are actually sort of like within the Pacific who aren't, that aren't actually sort of like noticed is actually covered by that one, that one, that one chapter. But one of the things that I've observed too is depending on who's on the board, the the chapter, the the board just tends to sort of like deal with specific, like or some of the, like Fiji gets a lot of, lot of, lot of attention because it's the main sort of like the hub of, you know, within the Pacific. So there are lots of areas that actually sort of like get, but not just the Pacific because there are other small island developing states that sort of like just don't get that same attention. So so like just trying to think of ways in which we can actually sort of engage them as well. Thanks.
Thank you for that. And as I, as you'll see in our action plan 2025, we have a particular focus on small islands, especially with respect to the resilience and connectivity work. But that's an entry point for further advocacy. So I I hope you'll see that in in our future plans. Okay, great. Next slide, please. So this is again by the numbers, over 100 statements, open letters and submissions over the last five years, 50 policies and legislations that we have opposed. This doesn't, isn't such a positive thing, but it is the the world we live in where we find ourselves needing to defend the internet against bad policy proposals around the world. And we're set up and prepared to do that in a way that we weren't, frankly, five years ago. We have worked on over 20 internet impact assessments. This is a framework that we use where we take a proposal, a policy proposal, but not just exclusively a policy proposal, but we take a policy proposal and evaluate it against the core properties of the internet. Would this policy proposal impact the openness of the internet, the security, the trustworthiness, et cetera? And we provide that, and we're not just doing this as staff. Many of our chapters do these and our partners will do these impact assessments as a as a framework for policymakers to understand the impact of their policies on the internet, similar to the way they might do an environmental impact report. If you are building a bridge, you do an environmental impact report to see what the impact on the environment would be of your of your choice. And we would like to see policymakers do this more and more through this framework. Again, what I'm, what I'm showing you now did not exist at the beginning of this five-year strategy. And now we have an assessment framework by which we can do that. And finally, six amicus briefs were filed. Once again, at the beginning of the five-year strategy, we did not have an amicus program. And now we have a robust amicus program that's ready to move out of the U.S. and take on more international cases. So we're really quite proud of that. Next slide. Global Encryption Coalition. Some of you would have participated in Global Encryption Day just a few days ago. But this, just to remind you, at the beginning of this strategy, we did not have a Global Encryption Coalition. What we understood was that there were more and more moves either through business decisions or policy decisions to undermine the security of the internet by undermining end-to-end encryption. So we knew that that was a threat. We also knew that the Internet Society by itself was not going to stop that tide on our own. And so what we did was we worked with partners around the world to build a coalition that could be activated to address threats to encryption. As you'll see here, the membership has grown by more than 10 times, consists of members across 105 countries. Many of those are chapter members. And 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 you'll see, look at the number of organizations. In 2020, we had 37 organizations and today we have 434. More importantly is the impact that this coalition has. When there is a threat that emerges, a coalition member can raise it to their colleagues in the coalition. People surround that threat with ideas, with ways to advocate about that threat. It might be through a letter, it might be through direct advocacy, it might be through P R. There are different mechanisms that can be used. And we can activate that coalition to address threats. And we have seen a high level of success when that coalition is is activated. So this is, again, this did not exist at the beginning of the strategy. And now we have a methodology and a community that is passionate and committed to securing the internet by protecting encryption. And of course, we just had the Global Encryption Day where we had over 200 attendees from 58 countries really comparing ideas and notes about what are the threats? How do we respond to those threats? What are the trends that we might all need to understand as a coalition and and what's coming before us? So really proud of of the work that we've done over the last period with the community and with our partners to to support encryption and around the world. Any comments or questions? Next slide, please. This is a video that the the Chair of the Netherlands Chapter, Ruben, provided to our recent all-staff meeting where he came and and spoke to us about the work that the Dutch Chapter did around the recent EU proposal on on child protection that included some really troubling language that would have undermined encryption. And the Dutch Chapter really launched into action to advocate with their with their government. We were supportive of that work in the best ways that we could as staff. But Ruben has a has a great little story to tell about about how they did that and the work that the Dutch Chapter does, which is just one signal from a chapter. And we see this over and over from from chapters around the world. If we could play that video, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ruben Brave and I am the Chair of Internet Society Netherlands. Today, I want to briefly overview our recent efforts and successes in promoting a safer and more accessible internet. We are incredibly excited. We are incredibly excited about the positive developments in the Netherlands regarding the regulation of online child pornography. And the recent positioning of the Dutch government highlights both the need to combat child abuse and the protection of fundamental rights such as privacy and the security of our digital spaces. Thanks to the collective efforts of our team and many involved partners, including Fred Hager from the Fair Digital Education Working Group and Hendrik Roed from the Internet Transparency Working Group, we've taken several significant steps. First, we have effectively communicated with policymakers through direct conversations and sharing our concerns and recommendations in public letters. Also, the support from Members of Parliament, such as Barbara Katman and Hanika van der Verweer, has strengthened our message and helped us reach a broader audience. But I also would like to mention our other working group members, such as Simon Bestemon from the Dutch Cloud Community and also Board Member ISO Canal, Professor Jaapem Hoopman, who have supported us with valuable insights and expertise. And their contributions have been crucial for our advocacy efforts. But also something else. Additionally, we have shared a video in our newsletter with approximately thirteen hundred members, highlighting the impact of our work. And this kind of communication is vital, not only to celebrate our successes, but also raise awareness about the importance of our mission. Lastly, I would like to thank our volunteers and supporters, such as Callum Vog and David Fauci, because their dedication and passion are indispensable in this fight for a better Internet for everyone. So yeah, let's continue to work together and make our voices heard. Together, we can create a safer, more inclusive and transparent digital world. Thank you for your attention.
So again, we shared this at an all-staff meeting a couple of weeks ago as a as a reflection on the ways in which the local communities, the local chapters are are having an impact in the world. And I think the staff appreciated that. The the shout out at the end to Callum and David are are two members of our staff that have been supporting the Dutch Chapter in their advocacy. All right. Next, any more questions on advocacy before we turn the page? All right. So here we see the work that we've been doing to empower Internet champions around the world. Over twelve thousand Internet champions have been trained or have have gone through fellowship programs at the Internet Society from a hundred and seventy-five countries. And once again, at the beginning of this five-year strategy, we had fellowship programs that were really more travel opportunities than full fellowship activities. We had a rather nascent online learning environment. And what we've done over the last five years is we've reimagined our fellowship programs so that when people participate in a fellowship program, they get access to learning opportunities. They have the opportunity to do projects, they can network with other Internet leaders. They become acquainted with their local chapter if they aren't already, and then eventually become part of our alumni network. Our learners have access to moderated content, in-person training and online content and and courses. And of course, we've invested in a new platform and in in many, many more courses than we had five years ago. So we're we're really proud of of the way in which the training and the fellowship programs extend the reach of the Internet Society and allow us to scale our work around the world. It's a critical feature of 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 our plans and of our programs. But and most importantly, our ability to scale depends on this. And this is the future of the Internet Society, right? These people who are learning and going through fellowship programs are the future leaders of the Internet. And what some of you may not be aware of is is many of our trustees, five years ago, were involved in the process to reimagine the fellowships so that we could agree upon a purpose and a focus for our fellowship programs that we're starting to see take hold in the in the last several years. Next slide. These are the numbers. And again, you'll see where we started in 2021 and and the upward and to the right data here. Over a thousand training sessions, we now have seventeen training courses. A new one on accessibility just added and opens next on Monday. I'll speak about that more. A hundred and forty-five tutors, a hundred and nineteen partners who supported our training. Of these, twenty-eight of those partners are chapters, and that number keeps increasing every year. And so we're really, really proud of of the way in which the training work has developed over the last five years. And again, as you'll see in our five-year strategy going forward, this is a key asset for us in order to expand the impact of our programs. So this investment over the last five years is going to position us for impact in the next five. Any questions on that? Okay, next slide. Next slide. This is a nice spotlight on a specific chapter. This is the Panama chapter, seven years of impact. And what we wanted to show you, and this is very small print, I apologize for that, is the way, sort of a journey of a chapter that began with the Internet Society of Panama thinking about wanting to host the National Internet Governance Forum. They started a multi-stakeholder group, they and they held the first national IGF, which positioned that chapter as a key stakeholder in Panama in the Internet discussions in Panama. So that was the a step that the chapter took to increase awareness about their work and and the contribution that they could make within their country. Over the next several years, they they invested in capacity building, in a range of activities on IOT, IPv6 manners. And they they were inspired to begin work on a community network in 2018. So they started some training programs with us in partnership, initiated some meetings with local experts on what a community network project would look like. And in 2023, in really small print here, you will see that they inaugurated the first community networks in Panama. And they're providing now Internet access to over two hundred inhabitants in that community. They've been conducting training sessions to ensure that this project is sustainable, that the people who are connected have the capacity to sustain that connectivity going forward. And they are now looking at expanding that community network and strengthening a series of community networks in Panama. And they are looking now, and they're now at the stage where they they know they have solid Internet Society support and funding. And they are now in the position to seek local and regional partnerships and funding for the work that they're doing. And so this is part of that sustainability path and journey that that they are on. And we're just tremendously proud of this chapter. This is one chapter. We see many chapters on a journey like this. And I thought it was important for the board to see how the Internet Society's strategic agenda plays out at the local level through a chapter's development and and what that looks like and just how well-positioned this chapter is to continue that impact over the next five years. So I thought it was a good moment to celebrate them. Any questions or reactions to that? Okay. All right. So that concludes the update on our current five-year strategy. If there are any questions, I can take those now, or we will turn to the 2024 update. All right, seeing none. Let's move on. In the board documents, you will see a long presentation of a report on our success measures to date. So I will take that as read, and this here is just a highlight on where we are. I held an ops review a couple of weeks ago with the team, and we are on track to achieve our success measures this year and many of the projects and programs that we that we have for 2024. In the in the grow area, the IXP and CN grants are remain in high demand. In each case, we've exceeded the targeted number of grants distributed. What this tells us and what we wanted to see by shifting this grant program to the philanthropy team is that this reflects an ability or demonstrates that we can scale these programs much farther than we could have otherwise. With the support of Sarah and her team, we have a robust grant process in place for applications, for review, and then ultimately for reporting and impact measurement going forward. And so this was a step we took three years ago. And we're really happy to see the progress in 2024 as that really takes hold. The last round of IXP grants are currently in review, so that grant window has closed. And the funding should be going out over the next couple of weeks to support the IXP's through that grant program. Pulse continues to evolve into a critical tool for us internally to guide our work, but also externally, really happy to get that feedback from the OMAC that they would find value in even more of that reporting and ensuring that that information is in the right hands among our org members. We have been doing and investing in a lot of improvements to the user experience this year, which is contributing already to an increase in uptake for the Pulse data. Of course, the country reports have been rolled out, the fifty-fifty IXP or local content tracker has also been rolled out this year. And so this is really continues to be, I think, as our former trustee refers to it, as the gold standard of of Internet measurements. So we're really, really proud of that. For Internet Strong, we have already, as of the beginning of October, exceeded most of our 2024 advocacy targets. When I asked the team, why? What happened? How did this happen? What they were able to report is that this is due to community-driven advocacy that we are able to measure and capture. They have tried a number of different mechanisms to involve the community in advocacy. And each and every time we learn from those about what works and what doesn't work and how to draw the community in further into the advocacy. We're really excited about the interest by many of our chapters in training sessions on the Internet Impact Assessment Framework that I mentioned earlier, the desire to understand exactly how to do that work and then how to promote it in their local communities. And what you I sent around a couple of days ago was the 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 story from our chapter that we just certified today, the Malawi chapter, doing the Internet Impact Assessment Overview before the Malawi Parliament a couple of weeks ago. And so taking that training and then deploying it in their local community is just terrific. And and so that is that is working well, and I think you should expect to see more of that going forward. This has also been a busy couple of months for us in the UN space. Of course, the UN adopted the Global Digital Compact. The Internet Society, working alongside our partners in the technical community, were very active in that process, to the extent we were allowed to be, and did quite a bit of feedback on the various drafts and in consultation with national delegations to the to those negotiations. We're reasonably satisfied with the result. The Digital Compact is is there's there's some good stuff in there. Of course, a recognition of the IGF and the continuation of the IGF. But of course, the process to develop Global Digital Digital Compact was not as open and as transparent or multi-stakeholder as it should have been. And so that that made it very difficult and actually much more time-consuming to engage in the process because you're constantly chasing the drafts and trying to understand what was going on. And our team also just returned from the ITU's World Telecommunications Standardization Assembly in New Delhi, which was about two-week negotiation on the the work plan for the ITT going forward. And the reports back are very strong about the work that the delegation did with national delegations to influence the outcome on some key resolutions. And many of the threats that we had seen had been mitigated there. Leading into that, into both events, we released our matrices, which we've become known for, where we evaluate all the proposals coming in against our vision and mission and principles. And we circulate that to national delegations and others to help guide their thinking throughout the negotiations. And then finally, in our empowerment work, as I mentioned earlier, we are able to both track and support both organization members and chapters in their advocacy on issues that are important to them and that relate to our mission. And and to be able to see more and more org members and chapters engaging in advocacy is 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 a wonderful thing. And again, is the way that ISOC will scale around the world. In Istanbul, next next week, I think that's right. We will try a new approach to the at ISOC events, which is to include a portion of the at ISOC event to be a mission-oriented dialogue or discussion, followed by a reception or or cocktail hour at the end. And we'll learn some lessons from that in Istanbul, and then we will carry those forward into 2025. Yes, Caleb?
Yeah, just to note something extra that I I think the the there was this last ICANN meeting, the one that you organized, that is it Naraloo is saying they are happy to host ISOC. But I wouldn't know if you have already have plans for Seattle now to put it on the agenda and have something more robust, because it looks like it's gonna be like a general assembly where there will be so many participation of ISOC chapters participating in that space. And there was also a an invitation to the ISOC Board Chair to also come around during that period. Okay. Are you gonna do a follow-up on that?
Okay. Because the the moment you talked about the one for Istanbul, the one for Seattle just came to my mind, like, what extra plans we have to engage chapter members, because they are really gonna be there.
Yes, so thank you for that. We so we're gonna learn something from this event in Istanbul. And the idea is all chapter members who will be at the ICANN meeting will be invited, along with other parts of our community, whether that's org members or partners, IETF community, et cetera, are invited to participate in that. And we're intending that to be a dialogue about the 2025 strategy. And we're going to have conversations with people about the mission. We will learn from that in Istanbul, and then that can guide our approach to future ICANN meetings, but also other events that we hold at other community forums, whether that's Apricot or LACNIC meeting or or the rest. So this is a little bit of the the test, learn and adapt model that Sarah's so famous for. And we're excited to see see if it works. Maureen?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I'm understanding what Caleb was saying. And I think that there was a an introductory sort of like session that we had last time. But I really appreciate that, you know, what we're actually sort of like preparing for this this session. And as you say, for ongoing for others. And I think really just just raising that, you know, ISOC's profile within the, you know, the wider sort of communities is is really important. Thanks.
Caleb, did you have another comment? Oh, okay. All right. All right. Any other comments on the 24 update? All right, we can move on. Yes.
I'm just curious if um when I when I look at some of the stuff that that has been done with Pulse, I I see a lot of people using it as a as a as a source of information. And when when I talk to folks in the in the in the US government, they always gravitate towards the recent cyber directors document on BGP security. And while we have support within Pulse for RPKI capabilities, has there been any discussions about how they might augment Pulse with more general BGP capabilities since some of those security recommendations require more than just understanding the RPKI status of information being advertised. They're also interested in understanding, you know, what what do the relationships look like between organizations that are that are routing data? And I was just curious if if the Pulse team has thought about adding more BGP-centric things to their to their API.
I will follow up with the team and let you know. And if if you don't mind, if they have further questions on that, may I put them in touch with you? Okay, it's a good question. They're very keen constantly to have impact or input on measurements that they should be seeking. And they've had that conversation with the IAB with a lot of different parts of the community. What do people want to see added to to the tool? So I know they'd be open to the to the discussion. Let me find out if it's already on their radar screen.
And I'll I'll visit this red hole very briefly. Is there a specific BGP attribute you think that should be tracked here? And are you are you seeing these things that Pulse is getting out of things like public mirrors of BGP feeds or can you say a little bit more about what you're looking for?
So that there's a couple of different organizations that are doing BGP data collection. Ripe is a good example of one that that gives you both historical and live BGP feeds. What I've heard from some from several people is, can we actually aggregate that information in a way that allows us to build better visibility into what's happening outside of the RPKI framework?
I see.
Which routes are being used, how often? And granted, some of this is a scaling issue because I don't want people sitting there trying to figure out why did this route flap from A to B? That's that's insane, right? But under right, but being able to look at see if I can, being able to look at a path from different points of view in order to understand how routes are getting propagated through the network.
So there are commercial offerings in this space, obviously. And I think one of the questions we would have to explore if we're considering asking Pulse to do it is, is the value add that we're making this available for free or is the value add something else?
Right.
Because that's your
So yeah, so all I'm asking is whether or not they've actually, if the if the Pulse team has been looking at adding additional BGP information and if so, what that is. And I can, I will, I am more than happy to chat with them about things I've heard.
I I think I understand what you're asking for better. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
Victor, did you you look like you were gonna jump in or no? Oh, it fell. Oh, okay. All right. Okay. All right, so the next part of my presentation relates to accessibility. Move forward. As you will recall, in April of 2023, the board adopted a resolution which was a policy on accessibility for persons with disability and disabilities, excuse me, and asked the president and CEO to develop a plan to and a framework to build a culture of accessibility within the Internet Society and also a plan for website accessibility compliance. And in the documents presented to the board in Board Effect, there are two documents that you can refer to. One is an accessibility operational framework that we have developed and also a plan for website accessibility. We have been working over the last 18 months since the board resolution. There's been an internal staff accessibility group that has been working to develop these documents in close collaboration with the Accessibility Standing Group. And we're really quite quite happy with the progress that we've made. And in the last two months, we have finalized that framework into the documents that were submitted today. I do want to recognize the work that the staff have been doing over the last 18 months on accessibility to ensure that our website is the main ISOC website is accessible. It is audited and that the issues that have been identified or have been remedied have been and are being remediated. And that is work that will continue going forward. But what we will do in the operational framework and the website accessibility plan is formalize this work from an informal working group to a formal working group with the staff and formal channels of communication with the Accessibility Standing Group going forward. They are a tremendous group of experts, very passionate about these issues. And it's been a very good partnership over the last couple of months as we've developed this framework. So I do want to give them publicly a very big thank you for their support and their their contributions to this framework. I do think this is, and I said this to staff in a back channel post the other day, that this is an example of how we can co-create things with our community that are important to all of our success. What you will see in the framework is a plan to build a culture of accessibility within the Internet Society. That includes work on both internal staff. I'm just gonna go through this briefly. We will have the Accessibility Working Group. We are going to build a toolkit, an awareness toolkit for staff on accessibility and digital inclusion and develop training for all staff on accessibility. This will happen in 2025. Going forward, we will have measures that we will take with respect to accessibility as part of our compliance program and also maintain a training program for staff, particularly staff that are involved in content creation. And then there are some internal campaigns that we will develop as part of our human resources program to have accessibility champions inside our staff and a recognition program that emphasizes the importance of this to inclusion at the Internet Society. In addition to that, there is a tremendous amount of work being done to ensure that we minimize barriers to participation and engagement with the Internet Society content, to our services and to our meetings. So we will ensure that all Internet Society content is compliant with WCAG 2.1 standards. That will be the baseline going forward for all Internet Society content. We will ensure that our meetings are accessible, that our virtual tools provide transcription and support the use of assisted technologies as needed. And we will conduct regular audits to ensure that this is happening and to identify any problems that or or gaps that may may exist that we can work on. And then finally, in terms of our website, for the main site, the all the accessibilities that issues that were identified in the 2022 audit have been addressed. And 76% of our online courses will be compliant by the end of 2025. This has been a rolling process to ensure that our courses are compliant, our our grandfathered courses are compliant. And then, of course, future courses will be fully accessible going forward into the future. We have, as part of our budget, submitted a funding request targeted at the funds we will need to remediate any of the existing gaps that we have identified and also to support the development of the training courses for staff and and any for the community that may be needed. Finally, I'm happy to report to you that as of November 4th, this is late breaking news, that a brand-new learning course entitled Disability Leadership Training and Internet Governance and Digital Rights has been released and people will be able to to start registering for that course as of Monday. This course was developed by the Accessibility Standing Group with the support of our online learning team, TEL. And we're really proud of of the fact that this has been seen through fruition. And through this, what the Standing Group hopes to do is to equip disability advocates, Internet governance practitioners and training trainers with the tools needed to promote digital inclusion in their advocacy. So we're excited to see how people use that information and then we'll learn from that and build future tools as as needed. Finally, I I sent a message to all staff last week, as I mentioned, on our internal tool called Back Channel. That's kind of our intranet, emphasizing to everybody that accessibility is all of our responsibility. This is part of inclusion at the Internet Society is the part of it's the kind of organization we want to be. We want to be accessible and inclusive of everybody. And so this is not just a communications responsibility or the responsibility of IT, but it is a responsibility that we all share. And in order for that to happen, we will provide the training and resources needed so that staff can execute their responsibilities in this regard and that they can see the ways in which they're contributing to that. So with that, we have, as I said, we've submitted the framework and the five-year plan and the the plan for accessibility with respect to our websites. Caleb.
Yeah. Congratulations on making good strides on the accessibility task. That was that's 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 a great one. But despite all the strides that you've made, I just wanted to ask if you're having regular communication with that standing group to let them know of your continuous progress and that you're having a big level buying into some of the things that you are proposing to them. Because I think that was one of the really bone of contention the last time. Like ISOC was doing their stuff, they wanted this stuff. Everyone is not coming to the table to agree on something, so.
Yes, I think that's one of the pieces we're the most proud of with this is, and I I'll give a particular recognition to Dan York and Andre Copeland, who have met regularly with the Standing Group over the last several months. They saw this framework before we submitted it to the board. They've offered rounds of comments. We've discussed the comments. And they sent me a message just a few days ago saying how grateful they were for the interaction and 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 their support for the plan. But it doesn't stop here. We will have continuous conversations with them. There are key parts of the plan that we can't do without them, and that was by design. We want to work together with them. They have expertise within that group, which is tremendous. So we want, we want to rely on that when we can. So yes, we will do this together.
So just to follow up on when you were describing the the new baseline, which is, I understand, a W3C-derived 2.1 accessibility baseline. Is that being applied during the procurement process as well as the other processes? Was a word I was kept expecting to hear and never did, and it might be just by implication, but if you could confirm.
Yes, new tools, new systems, new content need to be compliant with that standard going forward. So some of what we're doing is retroactive and then there's looking forward to as we, if we adopt tools, the AMS, for example, has been audited for that as well.
I think that's that's particularly critical because obviously remediating tools you've just purchased is 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 very very painful process. And even if you find something has a lot of other very useful features, as you say, that the culture doesn't change unless you say we we won't accept it unless it meets this this standard. So I'm very happy to hear that that's part of it. I I'd also like to to call out that I know that this has been something that was of particular interest to the community. This has been a very useful presentation to the board. Is there some way we can make this update, highlight this update to the broader community so that they understand this change? Because I think that's something, even though you've been working directly with the Accessibility Standing Group and obviously we're aware of it, that that part of the Internet being for everyone, being included in how we expect to work going forward is something I think the broader organizational and chapter community probably needs to hear. Because I think, one, they'll they'll be happy to hear it, but also they may need to think themselves about how they're purchasing tools or bringing in people when they're not provided by ISOC Global.
I think my plan for that will include reaching out to the Standing Group and seeing if we can do some sort of joint communication to the community. Okay, thank you for that. Charles.
Just want to echo the gratitude from the what we heard from the community, especially the Standing Group, to the effort that you and Joe and so on have been able to put together. And so so that's the that's the thank you part. But also, you mentioned about the five-years plan. That is still upcoming, right? It isn't, it hasn't been released yet. Is that correct?
So in the operational, Accessibility Operational Framework, what you will see is a list of actions and the timeframe for those actions. So some actions will start in 2025, some will start in 26. The program becomes less specific further out we go because we're going to discover some things in 26 that will guide what we do in 27 and and so forth. So we have some specific actions that we know are in front of us for 25. We have plans for 26. And again, things become a little more aspirational further out, but that's in that framework.
Okay, I'm sure the Standing Group may have a heads up on that information. But can you also give us a pointer so it's easier for us to also have a reference to it and take a look at it?
Sure, it's in Board Effect. And yes, I'll send it around.
Okay.
That makes it easier. And we can go to the next slide if it's okay, just to finish out this part of the presentation.
Oh, okay.
But yeah, these are, well, this is sort of stating, restating what I said. But I, as part of the board resolution, the CEO has been asked to report back quarterly for the first year and then periodically thereafter. So you will receive ongoing reports from me about our progress against this plan. And we'll make sure everything is is findable for you.
And and just one final point, because Sakarika and Maureen and I myself, we had a little discussion just before this item. And maybe Sakarika, you can take over for your question that you raised.
Yeah, I was just wondering, like, when I was going to the budget allocation for 2025, I didn't see any specific budget allocation item for the accessibility. So are there any specific items on that?
Yes, I think I saw something like that. Yes, so I think it's it's covered.
It's, yeah, it's in the board-designated funds request.
And just to follow up, one of the reasons for the procurement question is, obviously, the board-designated funds request is in part to fund that remediation, right? For the things that have already been proposed. But over time, we would expect more and more of this to be just part of the normal operating funds of the society. But is now that the baseline has been set and and these things are 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 part of the procurement process, the funds which purchase the, let's say, the the next system for interacting for, you know, particular class of members or preparing new documents for learning modules, et cetera, they would, they would already have been assessed to meet these guidelines. And so there wouldn't need to be separate And so there wouldn't need to be separate funds for remediation as a result. So I think the Board Designated Funds are there for the, the retrospective work that needs to be done, so to speak. And from now on, the, this new set of baselines will mean that the, the funding which is spent on an ongoing basis will, will meet these accessibility guidelines because of the, the framework which is being put in place. Caleb, did you have another intervention? Is there anything more on the accessibility point? Okay.
And that concludes the CEO report for this board meeting. Are there any other questions or comments on the CEO report? Seeing none?
Okay, thanks very, very much, everyone. Then the next item of business would be lunch and there'll be a compensation committee meeting over lunch that will be in this room. And then the full board will come back to this room at 10 minutes past 1:00. So for 1 hour and 13 minutes from now, for those of you who are not in the Dublin time zone, thanks very much, everybody, for a very productive morning and we will see you all soon. Thanks, everyone, for rejoining us. The next item of business is to review the presentation of the action plan for 2025. And for that, over to Sadle.
Thank you. There are two versions of the action plan in Board Effect. One is the longer write-up and what I will present to you is the slides, which is the summary of the action plan. This action plan is the basis for the budget that, say, we'll present in the, in the next session. All right, next slide. As you know, the, we have a 2030 strategy, a five-year strategy for the Internet Society and the Internet Society Foundation. And that strategy outlines the goals for the, for the Internet Society and the Foundation to ensure that the internet remains a global resource and a force for good in the world. What I am presenting today is year one of the five-year strategy. And and this is consistent with the programmatic overview that the board received during the retreat some weeks back. There may be a little bit repetition here today with that presentation because, of course, we're doing this in public session and so we want to make sure that that information is fully available. Next slide. To implement the five-year strategy and the strategic goals that the board adopted, we have developed six programs for the Internet Society that will guide our work going forward. These programs, each of them have a set of goals and a clear problem statement of what we are trying to achieve in each program. And they also have a set of, of high-level targets of the kind of impact that we wish to see in the next five years. These six programs, as, as I've told you, some of them are, at least one of them is, is brand new. Most of these are, are activities that in some way the Internet Society has been, been working on for some years, but with a more clarified focus and possibly a clearer set of audiences and targets that we are aiming at. And I, I just want to say that we are, we are excited to have that five-year framing. This allows us to do multi-year planning, which is really important for us as staff, for our community, to understand where we're trying to go over multiple years so that they can plan accordingly for their activities. Also really important as part of our funding strategy and the rest to have a consistent set of programs that, that clearly state where the Internet Society is going and the impact we want to have in the world. Next slide. So Program One is Community-Centered Connectivity. Next slide. As we know, we, we, there are still people, 2 billion people, who do not have sufficient access to internet connectivity. And this program aims to address this challenge by empowering communities to connect themselves to the internet and providing the resources, the policy environment and the infrastructure to enable them to do that. And in particular, in marginalized and underserved populations. Next slide. What we want to do here is improve and scale our approach. As you know, we have been building community networks for many years and supporting communities that want to deploy this connectivity model around the world. And our aim over the next five years is to really scale that approach to many, many more communities. By definition, these 2 billion people that are not yet connected to the internet are among the most difficult to reach. And to the extent that we can empower them to connect themselves to the internet and to be part of the growing internet technical community, we think that we have a sustainable model for internet connectivity that can scale across the globe. We want to identify and promote simple and easy connectivity solutions and deliver the training and connect these communities to technical communities so that they can both build the internet in their communities, maintain it, sustain it, and then ultimately defend it against anybody who would try to take it away. We do this work through grants, through advocacy and through community building that are core to our approach. Next slide. For 2025, our success measures in this area are that we will deliver six grants to build or expand community-centered connectivity solutions in 2025. We aim to see 25% of our chapters that are taking action in support of community-centered connectivity with our support and, and in some cases, resources. And 1,400 people connected or trained to support community-centered connectivity in their communities. Any questions on this? As I mentioned to the board in the, in the program plan, we have a specific focus for this program over the next five years, which is to focus on refugee communities, indigenous communities and communities where we see women-led social enterprises. To do that, we have work to do in 2025 to reach out and ensure that we have connections to the right experts and communities there. So there's a fair amount of work that will be happening sort of behind the scenes to ensure that we can, in fact, deliver connectivity to those populations. So there's, in addition to these success measures, you should expect a lot of outreach happening by, by the Internet Society and our communities to ensure that we can, can work and support those populations as they come online. Next slide. Program Two relates to affordable and reliable access. Next slide. As we know, access is more expensive and more unreliable where internet interconnection infrastructure is weak or lacking. This program is focused on the work that we do to strengthen the interconnection environment by building IXP's, by supporting local technical communities to support those IXP's and ensuring that we are, in fact, bringing the costs of connectivity down. We measure this in large part through measuring the provision of local content. In other, in other words, bringing content home to the countries where we have deployed IXP's. What we know today is that in many countries, local content is actually hosted outside the country, which makes access to that, to that content more expensive and less reliable. By building the IXP's, we hope to bring that content home and allow it, that, that traffic to be exchanged locally. So by doing this, we know and we believe that we can make access more affordable and more resilient. In particular, our focus going forward will be for least developed countries and small island developing states. The Internet Society has been in this space for a very long time, working in developing countries around the world. And some of the most difficult environments for IXP's now are the least developed countries and small islands. So there's a lot of work and a lot of need in, in those communities. Next slide. And once again, our focus is on scale. How do we ensure that the work we do can scale across the globe? And that means partnerships, that means working with our local communities and ensuring that it's not just ISO staff doing this work, but that we make the resources available so that others can carry this forward. Again, you'll see the focus on small island developing states and least developed countries as part of this program. We will strengthen the local peering infrastructure through training, providing grants, advocacy. And a focus for next year is on improving the materials and resources that we already provide to communities. We've been doing that for a long time and it's a good moment over the next year to take a look at the training and the content that we provide and update it and ensure that it's fit for purpose for the, for the current environment. Next slide. So in 2025, we will provide 10 grants to build or to up-level existing IXP's. We will support 20 technical communities that surround the IXP's. As I mentioned earlier, this can take the form of network operator groups, IXP associations and other technical communities that, that are essential for supporting local infrastructure. We will host 15 peering events. These are really important places where IXP's, especially new IXP's, can exchange information, engage in learning opportunities, et cetera, so that as they're facing challenges with their IXP, they can build relationships with other IXP operators who may have encountered similar things. We hope to see 25% of our chapters take action in support of affordable and reliable access in their countries. Over 1,200, over 1,200 people trained in this area. And this last one here, 600 autonomous system number representatives who participate in our peering events. This was an important number that we settled on a couple of years ago because it's not enough to just see the numbers of people attending our events growing. What we want to ensure is that the content that we're providing at these events is relevant to the target audiences that we're trying to serve. And so that's why we're focused there on the ASN representatives in those events. Ted?
Thank you very much. I, I am generally obviously very supportive of this. I, I will make a couple of suggestions for the ways we approach this that we might want to think about. One is, in at least some of the network operator communities, when you talk about a peering event, it's typically a place for networking groups to find people to exchange BGP with. So it specifically means a, a place that you, as an IXP, can go and find peers, BGP speaking peers. And the way you've described this sounds like you want to have something that's one step up from that, which is IXP's talking to other IXP's about their operations. And I think both are very valuable goals and both are things we ought to support, but you may want to use a different word than peering events for this top, top-level thing because it's sort of a term of art. The second thing, it, it might be helpful to, when you talk about number of grants distributed to build or up-level IXP's or improve IXP's, to tie that in to what that's going to mean for IXP capacity for the up-level side. Right? So if, if you're going to give a grant, is it going to result in new capacity, new autonomous systems capable? Because there are a number of different things you might do to improve an IXP, either from the security side or from other things, to be a little bit crisper about what kind of improvement you want to see. The, the last thing on the number of autonomous systems is there are cases where this measure can be a little weird. Especially if you're in a, in an economy where there's a dominant telco, the telco may turn around and split their operations into many different autonomous systems. For example, in the, in the US West region, there was one telco famous for having a different ASN for every LADA, which is nuts. I see Brian is, is nodding his head. Yes, that's nuts. Why would you do that? So you may want to marry that to the actual either set of routes or set of customers so that those, those weird telco-dominated situations don't turn out, don't turn up and actually frustrate your, your effort here because you, you really do want to make sure that you're getting a denser inner, inner connectivity rather than having like your, your eyeball network in economy one, talking to every LADA of the telecom network. That doesn't actually help all that much. You're looking for density. And I think you, you have this so much experience in building IXP's. This is mostly in how you describe it, but that maybe just touching up the descriptions to, to capture that might be useful.
And just to clarify on the peering events, they do do both. So they're, they're, and I should have said that upfront, but they, they do both the, the interconnections as well as the, the training and, and network building. Sagarika?
Yeah, I have, yeah, yes, one question regarding this number of technical community support. So like, what do you mean by that? What, what kind of technical communities you have been supported, the chapters or?
If I can come back to you, I can get you the exact definition because it's part of the grant program. Yep. Okay, I, but I will come back to you. Remind me if I can. Okay. All right, next slide. Online trust and safety. This is a new area of work for the Internet Society. While we have been involved in advocacy around cybersecurity, privacy, encryption, this program aims really to, to focus on equipping people with the knowledge and skills to protect themselves online. Excellent. And we are bringing new people online. As I said, in Program One, we have a focus on bringing, you know, doing our part to, to address the 2 billion people who are not yet connected to the internet. As they come online, they face a higher risk of safety and security threats. They don't have the skills and the knowledge to protect themselves. They, they are at risk. And so what we aim, I should also say, the other thing that we know is that our chapters are heavily engaged in this kind of work. Through the Beyond the Net program, we have many, many of our chapters that are conducting local online safety training activities in their, in their local markets. And so there is clearly a demand within our chapter community and a need within our connectivity strategy to provide resources that ensure that as people come online, they have a safe experience. It is also the case that there is an enormous body of work out there on this topic. And so what we aim to do here is to co-create a program with the community to, to bring these kinds of resources, both to the chapters and to the new communities that we bring online. It is, it may not be the case that the Internet Society itself is creating these resources, but rather what we would do is seek to partner with organizations that already have these kinds of resources and package them up in ways that are accessible, both to our chapters and to community networks as they come online. Next slide. To do this, we need to develop diverse partnerships with leading experts, including those in our Accessibility Standing Group. There's also an online safety standing group that will be key to this. Our chapters, our partners, our alumni to co-create this approach to helping people make safer choices online. And in year one, it's really about co-creation. And in Year One, it's really about co-creation. I think, as I said to you in the retreat, because we have so many of our chapters that are already engaged in this work, what we want to do is open a conversation with the community to understand what is motivating them to do this kind of work in their local communities? What is the demand signal that they're getting? What kinds of questions are they asked? What kinds of questions do they wish they had the answers to? What kinds of resources would help make them more effective in their local communities when providing this kind of training? Because we know they're doing it already. And then through that knowledge, what we hope to do is then create the program that will, it might be in the form of training. It might be in the form of toolkits and resources or pointers to others. PIR, for example, has a lot of resources about online safety. So there are partners that we can work with in this space. Next slide. So this program will start small in 2025 and then build as we do this outreach to the community. So you should see, and you'll see at least 10 outreach activities to the community related to co-creating this program with them. We want to see chapters and our special interest groups and standing groups engaging in this activity. And we hope that they are motivated to do that. We think they will be, again, because they're already doing this work. And so what we're aiming to do here is support them in that. We have some existing resources that we can already use for training. The Digital Footprints Course is extremely popular. The encryption courses are very popular. And then there's probably more that we will develop as we do this analysis with the community. And then we aim to do some pilot trainings in 2025 in order to learn from those as we build our strategy for '26 and beyond.
Just a quick note here that I think it would be useful to consider OMAC in the special interest group, standing groups that engage in the online trust and safety. There are certainly OMAC members, Meta being probably the most prominent, that provide these trainings themselves. And involving them in the development and co-creation seems like it would be a valuable thing to do.
And that was an oversight because absolutely, what we would hope to do is understand what the demand is from the chapters and then go to the OMAC to discuss what resources are available within the OMAC community. So that is absolutely a step and we will make sure that this is referenced going forward. No comments? Brian?
Just trying to find a good place to inject this. So in a lot of these, you have something like 25% of chapters participating across these different programs. Do you expect that 25% supporting this program is how much of an overlap with the 25% supporting the previous program?
Many of our chapters are involved in multiple things. And they may dabble in one and invest heavily in another, and that's okay. One could imagine a chapter that runs an internet, a local internet governance forum, could include a session related to online safety. Or they may be involved in building their community network and have input into what they might need. So I expect a certain amount of overlap. And not every chapter is involved in every topic, and that's okay, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there may be some overlap, and that's okay.
Yeah, I just think from my perspective, if we come back and we have a success, you know, we see success across all this and each of these is green. But then we see that, you know, the organizations that actually met that 25% for all of them is really just like 27% of the chapters that we have. That's, that would be a little disconcerting.
And we can separate that data out. Yep. Sagarika, is your flag, you have a question? Your flag is up, so I didn't know.
I was just asking like the technical communities you mentioned. It's the chapter technical communities or some other organizations?
Oh, this is for the technical communities. I will get back to you on that. I don't believe those are usually chapters, but they may be in some cases. So let us get back to you on that. Okay. All right. Let's keep going. Next slide. This is Program Four, Open and Trustworthy Internet. This is where the bulk of our advocacy work, what you would have seen as defend the Internet, promote the Internet, is in this program. But importantly, there is advocacy in the connectivity programs as well. So it's not exclusively here. But this is where the bulk of that lives. Next slide. What we know is that governments, courts, commercial entities around the world are making decisions that could weaken the Internet, that could undermine the properties of the Internet that we find so important. So we want to be part of facilitating change, advocating for policies and practices that defend the Internet as an open and accessible platform. Next slide. And this text gets smaller because there's a lot that we're doing in this space. So one aspect in that first bullet is really around ensuring that we can activate our community, our staff, our partners. Proactively is the preference. Again, I'll go back to our Malawi chapter example. Getting into Parliament and going over the Internet Impact Assessment Framework before the laws are written is the ideal scenario. And so that proactive outreach is really important. But we also recognize that there are threats that come up that we have to respond to in real time and we have to be able to respond quickly. So activating the Global Encryption Coalition on threats to encryption or other partners in our ecosystem on other threats as they emerge. I sent around the letter that we wrote just this week on the cost-sharing proposal in Europe and being able to rally our community and our partners on key issues in response to key threats is a major part of this program. And what you're seeing here is us bringing all of those advocacy efforts together within the Internet Society rather than having these silos because there are a lot of techniques that have worked extremely well in the encryption space for us with the coalition that we want to be able to apply to other parts of our advocacy. A key goal for us is positioning the Internet Society as a powerful voice and a thought leader in the policy arena, whether that be at the national level, the regional, or the global level. We will be in 2025, beginning the process of updating our policy briefs and possibly crafting new ones as new topics emerge. This is a request from the community. And it's a good moment to take those out. I think there are 21 that currently exist. And our community finds those to be very helpful, three- and four-pagers that they can hand to government officials and use as the basis of advocacy. We will continue to do the training and engaging with officials from governments at the national and regional and global levels and be a voice for the Internet within the UN-led processes going forward. Of course, next year is a big year for the WISs. We have the WISs plus 20. And a lot of negotiations that will happen around that that we will be a part of. Our amicus work continues through this program and will hopefully expand around the globe. The support that we do for NDSS is in here as well. And we will be endeavoring to bring NDSS and the learning that comes out of NDSS and the research into the Internet Society in a more effective way and find ways to connect our community with that important security research that's happening there. And then finally, we are going to relaunch our community workshops in 2025 with a focus on advocacy and ensuring that our community is equipped with the expertise and the resources that they need to be effective advocates at the local level. As I mentioned in the CEO report, what we're seeing is that we are able to exceed our advocacy targets because we already have a community of effective advocates. So the more we can strengthen that capacity of our global community, the more impactful our advocacy will be.
Obviously, we're restarting this. So this is a retrospective question where it may not be a reasonable answer at all. But has there ever been a community workshop of this type that focused on the IETF?
Focused on the IETF?
Yeah, so that the members of the IETF could be effective advocates.
That's interesting. No, we have not done that.
Might be something to think about.
That's really interesting. I like that. Okay. We will take that on board. I don't know if we can do it in this cycle, but we can start talking to the community about that. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, I'm still thinking about that. That's exciting. Sagarika? Oh, microphone?
My question is regarding this, the UN-led processes you are talking about. Is that the advocacy programs or IETFs you are talking about?
So the work that we do in the UN ranges across a number of UN processes. So as I mentioned, there's the WISs plus 20 next year, which will take a lot of resources. The I2 also holds the World Telecom Development Conference next year. And then there's ongoing work that we do across a number of other UN processes. So that's what that means. But I think what Ted is asking is the kind of advocacy workshops that we're going to conduct for our community, are primarily the chapter community but not exclusively, could we also replicate that within the IETF community? And that's a really interesting dimension that I hadn't thought of before. Does that answer your question, Sagarika? Sort of. Okay. Next slide. So these are the success measures for 2025. We intend to file three legal briefs, not exclusively in the United States. If we have opportunities to file internationally, we will try to do that. One of the exciting things that we are going to try with our alumni network is to use the alumni network as part of the landscape scanning that we have to do. So one of the things that we do now is use law firms to help us scan the legal landscape to identify cases and things that might be moving through the court system. Very difficult to do that internationally, but we have, a number of our alumni are in fact lawyers who could be activated to support this. And we haven't done that before, and we're going to see if that is a way to get them engaged in the amicus work. We will continue to hold the policymaker program in conjunction with the IETF, just as we are about to do starting tomorrow in Dublin. We really, you'll see here, a high number of chapters. We have high hopes for our chapter community to participate in advocacy. We will continue to conduct training, over 1,700 people trained to support an open and trustworthy Internet. We have a target of updating or issuing nine new policy briefs. So we either update or issue new ones. And I think we can probably do more than that. At least 21 policymakers participating in the policymaker program. I do want to flag for you, it is very difficult getting policymakers to these programs. We lost a lot of participants this time around due to visa issues getting into Dublin. And this is, we had a number of African policymakers who were unable to participate this time for that reason. So we're trying to figure out how to adjust for that. But that is a challenge for the program that we have to work on. And then you'll see at least 10 advocacy campaigns. And these are full-fledged sort of grassroots campaigns on topics as they emerge. Any questions on this? Okay. How am I doing on time? Okay. Next slide. Internet Insights and Innovation. Next slide. This is really about our ongoing investment within data and in particular in the Pulse platform as a source of trusted and actionable data about the health, availability, and evolution of the Internet. This is where we will also bring in the fiber, the fiber, the, sorry, the fiber standard that we discussed at the retreat. We're going to do some pilot work on that in 2025 per the feedback that we got from the board in September. Next slide. So we're going to continue to expand the Pulse data library and improve the resources and the Pulse user experience. This will be an ongoing effort. We want, it's not a one-stop thing, but we continue to expand Pulse and where we see suggestions for data that we should be collecting or new data sources that we can partner with, we want to do that. We're also looking to launch a Pulse Supporters Program to try to expand the reach of the tool, but also get some specialized insights that might come through a Supporters Program and also sponsored research. One of the things that's come out of Pulse has been, you know, this is a great source of data and researchers are really interested in it. And the Pulse fellowships give researchers the opportunity to do some really important research that we all benefit from through the program. And then, as I mentioned, we'll initiate work on the Open Fiber Data Standard based on the feedback from the board at the retreat. The feedback was to find a better home for the standard itself and then to look at appropriate approaches for ISOC to be engaged in the advocacy and outreach in that space. So we'll start on that early in the year and come back to the board with an update on what we learn and what we think is possible there. Okay. Next slide. We're setting some baselines in terms of the Pulse website and number of views and materials that are downloaded. So we will have a baseline that will then set future targets related to Pulse going forward. We continue to want to see growth in the number of references to Pulse data in media advocacy and research. This reinforces what you'll hear a bit from Chris later about the Internet Society as a recognized global brand. It's the credibility that comes through resources like this that help make that possible. We want to do outreach activities to the community around Pulse. This has been very impactful. Our community uses the Pulse data in their own local advocacy. And so ensuring they know when we have new data sources or new reports or new tools that they can use as part of Pulse is really important to support their advocacy. We will intend to have seven Pulse fellows next year, a number of Internet Measurement Days, and then looking, as I said, to pilot the Open Fiber Data Standard next year. But again, that number there will be dependent on us coming back to the board with a clear plan for how that will work. Okay. Next slide. Community and Partner Mobilization. An important thing, as you would have seen in all of the success measures for the previous programs, community and partner mobilization is built into every program. We cannot scale our work. Otherwise, our impact is dependent upon an active and mobilized community. So this program is really focused on ensuring that the community has the resources, support, and capacity building to do their work effectively. Next slide. Clearly, keeping the Internet protected doesn't happen with ISOC staff alone. It is up to our entire community to be part of this work. And so as I said, what we focus on here is ensuring that the community has the resources and support they need to drive meaningful change in wherever they sit within the ecosystem. Next slide. Next slide. So this program includes our awards program. If you haven't already heard, we will announce two Postel Award winners this week during If you haven't already heard, we will announce two Postel Award winners this week during the IETF plenary. And next year is the year for the Internet Hall of Fame. And this is really where we recognize the visionaries that made the internet what it is today. We are also announcing, I should say, the Idigen Service Award this week at the IETF, which is very exciting and in partnership with Wide Japan. We want to strengthen our relationships with the internet technical community and our partners in support of our goals. I think, you know, Maureen and Caleb, you had mentioned the work we're going to be doing at ICANN in the coming week. But this is across the internet ecosystem and making sure that we have the partnerships with our, with our key technical community members that help us take our advocacy and our work forward. And part of this is, is the role that the ISOC CEO has traditionally played in convening the I-Star CEOs, but it's also about just the cooperative relationships that need to exist across the ecosystem. We will prioritize community mobilization that supports our program and fundraising needs. And we want to keep considering and finding new and innovative ways to commute, to meet our community needs. We've spoken about resources, ensuring that they have the resources, the funding that they need, but also through workshops, through policy briefs and through a wide range of activities to ensure that, that the programs, that they have the information they need about our programs and our work to be effective on the ground. And obviously, a key part of this is not that the community remains static. What I hope we come to you with at the end of five years is evidence that we have a growing and thriving community in all parts of our community, our chapters, our individual members and our organization members. Next slide. So we intend to have a number of outreach activities. As I mentioned, we will have an at ISOC event in Istanbul, which will teach us something about future at ISOC events that will take place in 2025 and how we can ensure that we have mission-oriented conversations as well as social opportunities for our community to get together in places where they tend to meet up. We will have the 10 community events that we host. We want to continue to see our organization members participate in advocacy, which they are doing, and we are, we are grateful for that. We want certainly to see our organization member, member revenue retained. But also, I know Chris and his team are very keen to see that number grow. So a baseline is retention. And then what you'll hear from Chris is, is targets for how we grow.
So I kind of wonder here whether we should focus on revenue or organizational member numbers, maybe splitting that out into two different success measures. Because there are certainly cases where in the past, we've seen organizational members go up or down a level depending on their own finances, but where their commitment to the, the mission didn't really change. And I suspect we may see the same in the upcoming economic cycle. So we may want to think both about the percentage of organizational members retained as well as the revenue retained as a separate measure. I, I would dearly love to see 100% as the target for membership retained. But I, I will leave it to the two of you to set that.
Okay. Chris, did you want to add anything to that or are you good?
No, other than agreeing, no.
And then finally, we want to see 90% of our chapters coming in with strong performance evaluation results. This is, those results of chapter evaluations are what drive the funding opportunities for the chapters. But it is not a test. It is a reflection on the kind of support that we are providing to the chapters to ensure that they can achieve a strong result and then in turn go out and do great work in the world. And we'll speak more about that in the budget presentation. I should also say here, there is, we, we have proposed an increase in admin funding for the chapters for 2025, a 17% increase for 2025. Okay. Oh, go ahead.
So for the chapter admin funding that is 17%, is it based on the, you know, they are being graded gigabytes, megabytes? And is it based on each of, of those? Okay. Oh, I'll have other side questions later.
Okay. Next slide. The, you will recall that the, the strategy that, that the board agreed to had strategic goals, but also transformations for what, how you hope the internet society can transform over the next five-year period. Important, so next slide, please. We are committed to improving the internet society's operations and strengthening the support provided by the Internet Society Foundation. So the transformations, in some cases, will be carried out by the foundation. And Chris will speak more to those and Sarah as well tomorrow. And some are conducted within the internet society itself. But overall, what's important is that the internet society, over the last five years, has spent quite a bit of time and resources developing an environment in which we can say what we're going to do, do what we said we are going to do, be transparent about what we said we are going to do, and then tell you whether or not we did it. And, and tell the community, most importantly. All of that takes a maturity of the environment within the internet society to do that. That's through data collection and ensuring that we are able to pull the data from different systems within our organization. But it's also about processes and governance and the overall operational environment of the internet society. We have a great foundation to do that. And the transformations that you've identified really do tell us how to, what we need to achieve over the next five years. We will not transform in year one. I want to be clear, transformation over five years will be a transformation over five years. There are steps that we can take in year one, and that's what I'll describe here. Next slide. These are the nine transformations that the board adopted here. So you'll see powerful advocacy, cultivation of future internet leaders, impactful giving, financial health and sustainability, a strong ethics and governance framework, a recognized global brand, I mentioned that earlier, a talented workforce committed to innovation and inclusion, inspired and mobilized global community and data-driven decision-making. Again, we will not transform in all of these areas in one year, but there will be steps taken each year to ensure that we continue to improve the organization overall. Next slide. A key focus for us as we strive for good governance and ethics is that we need to ensure that our processes are transparent and fair. And that is a lens that we look at consistently in, in all of our work. For next year, we will put a special focus on improving our procurement and vendor management processes. As you can imagine, for an organization of this size, we have a lot of vendors and oversight that's, that we're responsible. And we want to ensure that we have accountability for the performance of our vendors, that we have more efficiency in how we select and identify and utilize our vendors. Ultimately, we want to see cost reductions and really ensuring that our procurement processes drive strategic value for the organization. Next slide. We have a amazing workforce at the internet society. We have over 150 staff in at least, last I counted, 32 countries around the world. That is a complex environment, but it's wonderful and it's who we are. And we want to ensure that this workforce is supported, has the resources it needs wherever they work in the world and that we have opportunities to bring them together in support of our mission. One area that we need to improve next year is the human resource information system that we use to support our staff. The current system is not up to our standards anymore. And so we will be investing in a new system in 2025. And that will be part of the, the board fund request that will come through in the, in the finance presentation. But this will allow us to make the right decisions that support our staff and ensure that we are streamlining our processes. The current system is, is quite manual. We need to ensure that we're supporting data security and a lot of other things that go into a human resource system. So that will be a big investment next year to support, to support our staff. And then finally, as I mentioned earlier, taking steps to fully embrace a culture of accessibility and inclusion by ensuring that our staff are equipped with the, the resources they need to support our accessibility policy. Next slide. Our community, as I've mentioned, is critical to advancing our mission. And we, as, as you all well know, rolled out an association management system over the last 18 months. There are still improvements that are needed to ensure that the system meets the needs of our community and of the internet society. And so we will continue to make investments in that system next year, in particular to improve the email functionality, which remains a sore spot for many. And we're committed to ensuring that that system continues to evolve and meet everybody's needs as best we can and that that investment pays off over time. And also, as, as we said, ensuring that the materials and resources we deliver are as accessible as possible. Excellent. Embracing a data-driven culture and decision-making. This is really exciting to me. I love data. Unfortunately, the data at the internet society is in a lot of different systems that don't talk to each other very well, if at all. Putting together the slides that we put, present to the board is a manual process of pulling that data from different systems. It is difficult to make decisions on the basis of the data that we have because it is not easily accessible. And so we are asking the board for support through the board fund to support some data architecture work and data governance work that we need to do to ensure that we can use data in the best way possible to make decisions about the future and to show the impact that we are having in the world. This is really important for, for, and Chris will talk about this later, but the ability to tell stories about what the internet society is doing is in part dependent on having access to the data and being able to show that in real time without a lot of manual work. When it's a lot of manual work, the stories come more slowly. So we really want to improve that, which will also improve transparency with the community and will improve the kinds of reporting that we can give you as trustees. So with that, I conclude the presentation of the 2025 action plan. Any comments or questions? Nice slides.
Caleb. Yes, so I, I wouldn't know if, as the, maybe I missed that, the chapter, the increase in the chapter admin funding, if it's already in the budget now? So I was just looking at it. I'm not saying. Yes, but since you raised something on chapter admin funding, and we might probably get to that and it might affect the budget conversation. So I was thinking that perhaps the 17% increase which was proposed might, if you can have a slightly upward review to round it up, maybe to 20%? It's just an additional 3%.
If we do that, we would need to find the money in the budget to do that. It would come from somewhere else because the budget is currently balanced. So if that is the wish of the board, what we would need to do is trim some things elsewhere in order to cover that 3%. It's not a huge amount, as you point out, but that's, that would be how that would work.
Okay. It's, it's a proposal and I do hope that it's considered. Thanks.
So I think the action plan is very exciting. There's a lot in it, a lot, both on the transformation side and the plans for starting out the five years. And I think one of the things that's most exciting to me personally about it is to see the efforts that are going to go into knitting the different parts of the society together more effectively. As Sally, you pointed out several times, the scaling properties of the internet society cannot be in the staff. It's very clear that even though we've been blessed with a lot of resources, many of the challenges we're taking on, whether it being connecting the inter, connecting the interconnected or in advocacy are, are facing challenges which are simply much more expensive than we will ever be able to take on, on our own. So I'm very excited to see both the level to which you focused on activating a broader community and knitting together the different communities that we have. And I'm looking forward tomorrow to hearing Chris because I believe that that will also make it easier for us to take up the new fundraising strategies which he will be presenting. So I think it's very nice to see all of this kind of coming together, both in the different parts of the community and the different parts of the strategy. And as you say, seeing it in this longer-term, five-year context. I, I will say that every great plan changes the instant it meets reality. And the reality which we may be facing may change relatively rapidly, relatively soon. Let us hope not, but it's possible. But I think the principles that are, are outlined here don't need to change. We want to be data-driven. We want to advocate for the internet that we need to have. We want to make sure that the people that we have, both in staff and as part of the community, are supported and given the kind of training and encouragement that they need. And we need to make sure that they know all of the different parts of the community will work together. So I, I'm really pleased both to see the details of, of the first-year plan and the vision for the five years, but also that the principles are set out in such a way that if the plan does need to change, if we get headwinds that we're currently not hoping for, or if the ground falls out absolutely beneath us, we still have the right principles underneath it all. And I think it's a testament to all of the staff who put this together that that's the case. And I just wanted to say thank you for all the work you did in putting that together. We will be closing now the open portion of the meeting for a time to, to, to get the CFO's report, the budget report, and to talk to our colleagues at P A R. For those of you who are participating remotely, this will close out this until 5 o'clock Dublin time, at which point we will return into open session to, to take up some business approving the resolutions which will make these effective. I will tell you that those, those last minute, that, that 5 o'clock hour is probably going to be much less informative than Sally's presentation or what you've heard so far today, since it is the, the board taking the decisions rather than getting the information. But we will welcome you back at 5:00 if you're available. Thanks very much, and I think we can close the recording now.
Patients with the IETF chair and the I E B chair ran a little long. We are now at the open for Sagarika and, and Ross, I'm going to ask you to, to take, take your conversation to the other side. We are now at the point where we need to approve various resolutions. So the first of this is the approval of the action plan, budget and board-designated funds. The post-resolution reads, "Result that the Internet Society Board of Trustees Approves the 2025 Action Plan and Budget" as presented. I may ask someone to move the motion. Brian, and I saw Funke as a second. Is there any discussion?
Brian? And I saw Funky as a second. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing no discussion, I will put it to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand either in person or on the tool. Thank you very much. Any opposed? Any abstain? Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. The next resolution is to approve the board-designated funds for the internet society, and it reads, "Resolved that the Board of Trustees Approves Designating a Total of $1 Million US Dollars to be Funded by the Connected Giving Foundation as a Restricted Grant for the Board Initiatives as outlined below: An additional $175,000 to fund the data transformation, an additional $55,000 to fund the Opportunity Fund, $245,000 to fund the enterprise architecture assessment, $260,000 to fund the Human Capability Management System, $125,000 to fund accessibility, and $140,000 to fund vendor management." May I ask someone to move the motion? I saw Barry and Victor as second. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing no discussion, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? Any abstain? Once again, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The last here is the approval of the Pierre budget, and Sally, I believe that is assigned to you.
So the resolution is proposed, reads, "Approve the 2025 Public Interest Registry Budget. Resolved that the Internet Society Board of Trustees hereby approves the 2025 Budget of the Public Interest Registry as presented."
Thank you for that. Who seconds? I saw Funky. Is there any discussion of the resolution? Hearing none, may I ask for votes? If you are in favor, please raise your hand now. Any opposed? Any abstain? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The final agenda item is a question to the trustees if there's any other business for the good of the other. Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all for your time today, and thank you especially to Laura for sticking with us for very long, tiring set of time zones.